I'm glad to be wearing things like that. I get little complainers to like, you know, everything now smells like some oak wood.
I'd like to call to order the city council work session for April the 15th. Let me please remind you if you have a cellphone or other device to silence it. And if you haven't done your taxes, we will try to go through our meeting quickly so you can get home early enough to finish that work. Our first order of business is to recognize some of our employees. I first like to call forward our fire chief Scott Allers for five years of service to the city of Clearwater. Chief Allers.
Hold on, sir. Thank you. Five years. Thank you. You got your hands filled out. Thank you. Chief, congratulations.
And for 20 years of service, Scott Smith from our utility customer service department.
For more than 100 years, the city of Clearwater, it's not Scott's tenure, but the city of Clearwater has embraced and nurtured those employees who are dedicated to their everyday work. These employees have a mission to provide the best for our city, citizens, and customers. Scott Smith is one of those employees who are committed to the highest quality of service, who strives to be the best at what he does, and does so with impeccable work ethic. Scott began his career with the city of Clearwater on April 19th, 1999, as a utility customer service meter reader. In August of 2000, Scott was promoted to a customer service representative, cross-trained in the cashiering area to help him become more familiar with all areas of the department. In 2002, Scott was promoted to the customer service coordinator over the field service representatives and the collection division. In recent years, the field service division has grown tremendously, and Scott has taken on the responsibilities of just being the field service representatives coordinator in order to accommodate the growth. Scott leads by example and inspires his team with confidence in what service they provide to the city. He truly cares for his coworkers and is often the initiator of great acts of kindness. We acknowledge and appreciate your commitment to the city and the utility customer service department, as its success is built upon your dedication and hard work. Honored to recognize Scott Smith for his 20 years of dedicated and professional service to the city, our citizens, and the customers of the utility customer service department. Scott Smith, 20 years of service.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
And for 25 years of service, Dave Roberts from our engineering in Stormwater. I'm switching things around, you know, I'm meant to let you know.
Dave Roberts started with the city of Clearwater on April 18th, 1994, in the Parks and Recreation Department Nursery Division. He worked in the nursery and the irrigation team for four years. He transferred to the Public Utilities Water Division, where he worked on the potable water distribution system for 10 years. In 2008, Dave accepted the position of Heavy Equipment Operator in the Public Services Division, Stormwater. When Stormwater Maintenance was moved in 2012, Dave became an Engineering Department employee. Dave is known for portraying Santa Claus. He would take vacation days from the city and transform to Santa Claus for the downtown farmer's merchant, for the farmer's market on Cleveland during the holiday season. Dave is reliable and always on time. He is usually the first person here in the morning to turn on the lights. As a Stormwater Heavy Equipment Operator, he excavates, removes sediment from ditches and ponds, and mows the slopes of ditches to help keep the Stormwater system functioning as designed. When new Stormwater employees are ready to learn how to operate the front-end loader, Dave is the instructor. Dave's main task is to take care of Sherwood Yard. He loads trucks, screens recycled construction fill, and keeps recyclable asphalt and concrete separate from other materials. As in, as the operator in the yard, he gets to interact with employees from many different departments. Dave goes out of his way to make sure all requests by fellow employees and other departments are taken care of in a proficient and professional manner. He is friendly, good-natured individual, who always has a cheery smile and warm hello from everyone. Dave is an asset to the city of Clearwater. It's been a pleasure to have Mr. Roberts to work in the Stormwater Maintenance Division for the past 11 years. We salute you, Dave, for 25 years of outstanding service to the city of Clearwater. Dave Roberts, 25 years.
Love that you're Santa Claus. Thank you, Santa. Oh, ho, ho. Yes, we need to hear that. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much, Charlie.
I'm getting harassed because I've skipped over our 20-year employee Nicole Sprague. I was saving her until the end, but Nicole, come on up. 20 years of service, and Nicole Sprague from our Office of Records and Legislative Services.
Nicole began her career with the city as a part-time employee in February 1998 at the new Clearwater Beach Visitor Information Center, which was, at the time, located in the Marina Lobby. She became a temporary full-time employee in February 1999 with the Office of Tourism as an administrative analyst, and became a permanent employee in April of 1999. The Office of Tourism closed in August 1999, and Nicole was fortunate enough to find a position in the Clearwater Gas System Sales Department as an administrative analyst, where she spent seven years assisting the sales team with billing, commissions, and reports. In June 2006, Nicole transferred to the Official Records and Legislative Services as a city clerk specialist, and in 2010 was promoted to management analyst. Nicole oversees a myriad of functions, including coordinating the municipal code, enforcement board, and red light camera meetings, and public records training for new employees, just to name a few. She continually accepts challenges with enthusiasm and inspires her coworkers with her jovial work attitude. As some of you may have witnessed, her good humor and "go get 'em" attitude is on full display at the employee recognition lunches. Away from the city, Nicole spends time with her kids, shuttling them to softball and football. She has been married to her husband Skip, a former city employee, for 12 years. Her happy place is the beach, where she goes as often as life allows. Congratulations to Nicole Sprague. We bow down to you for 20 years, and exceptional service to the city of Clearwater and its citizens.
Thank you.
So why didn't I sign the thing here? Why don't you? Well, I'm not bowing down to you, Nicole.
No, you're not.
No, it's interesting to have you sign all this.
This was for 20 years. Actually, Nicole, I wanted to wait until Thursday night to do this, but your fan crowd is here, so thank you. And thanks to all of our employees for your service, whether it's 25 years, 20 years, or five days, you know, we appreciate the work that y'all do for the city all year long. And now we have a very special group, our bi-monthly team award for March-April goes to the Hurricane Michael Relief and Cleanup Team. I'd like to call forward Lieutenant Randy Johnson, Corporal Steve Squalente, Detective Ryan McMullin, Rex Wittenberger, who is no longer working for the city, Sergeant Jeff DeVincent, Sergeant Chris Zimmerman, Detective Robert Lozaro, Corporal Jared Stiff, Corporal Craig Murray, Detective James Phelps, Officer Marcos Valdez, Officer Robbie Jenkins, Officer Sergio Fidelis, Sergeant Shante Dean, Officer Chris Pranchi, Officer Elliot Lightfoot, Detective Jesse Lehman, Officer Joshua Gibson, Detective Jason Moore, Officer Mike Williams, Matthew Anderson, Chad Pockard, John McDowell, and Chancey Anderson.
As many of us know, Florida's Panhandle was devastated by Hurricane Michael, and we're honored to select this team made up of two departments for different reasons but one common goal. Officers from the Clearwater Police Department were immediately dispatched to assist with the ravages that Hurricane Michael had done to the Panhandle. They were assigned to Gulf County, where they performed a myriad of duties, often in challenging conditions. They assisted in search and rescue, staff shelters, helped hand out water in patrolled areas to maintain security in the hardest-hit areas. They did whatever it took, even helping residents to refill generators with gasoline. No matter what was needed, they did it. Parks and Recreation also sent a team of certified arborists, equipment operators, and CDL drivers, along with equipment, five-yard dump truck, Bobcat pickup truck, track lift, chainsaws, and hand tools, to help with cleaning up the debris from this catastrophe. The team was assigned to Calhoun County, a poor county with few resources, which was in the direct path of a hurricane. The team battled bad weather and dangerous site conditions every day. They were able to assist over 34 property owners get back to a somewhat normal existence. This team's sacrifice, dedication to duty, and willingness to go into harm's way earns our respect. Thank you. Hurricane Michael Relief and Cleanup Team.
Thank you. Lieutenant, good to see you.
My job is to give this to you.
Thank you, sir.
To show everybody so much.
Thank you, sir.
It's mad.
Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well done.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, you're here.
Oh, yeah.
My thinks that you weren't going to be here.
Well done, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Sergeant. Be awesome without you guys.
Well done.
Oh, sure, now you take your hat off.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, watch the stuff, sir.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sergeant. Be awesome without you guys.
Well done.
Oh, sure, now you take your hat off.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, watch the stuff, sir.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Again, thank you to that team, and how blessed we are to have had that storm miss us like we have been over the years. Say a special prayer for the people up in the Panhandle as they continue to recover from that storm. I'd like to recess our work session and call to order our pension trustees for April the 15th. Are there any addition or corrections to the minutes of April, March the 18th?
Will they be approved?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of March the 18th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda of the pension trustees? If not, I will close the public comment and move to Agenda Item 4.1.
Good morning. 4.1 is to approve the new hires for acceptance into the pension plan as listed.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.1?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.1?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Anybody from the public to speak to that? I forgot. Okay, moving forward. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 4.2.
Request to approve the following employees for regular pension as provided by Sections 2.416 and 2.424 of the employees' pension plan.
Any questions on 4.2? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.2?
Move to approve Agenda Item 4.2?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Anybody from the public to speak to that? I forgot. Okay, moving forward. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 4.2.
Request to approve the following employees for regular pension as provided by Sections 2.416 and 2.424 of the employees' pension plan.
Any questions on 4.2? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.2?
Move to approve Agenda Item 4.2?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 4.3.
Right on 4.3, I'm going to introduce Jay Ravens, the Finance Director, for the presentation of the actuary report.
Good morning, trustees. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This item is requesting acceptance of the plan's actuary report dated January 1st, 2019, which provides the actuarially required employer contribution for fiscal 2020. I'd like to introduce the plan's actuary, Peter Strong, with Gabriel Roder Smith, who will review the report with you.
Good morning, trustees. I was here three months ago to approve the experience study, so we have some new assumptions that have been implemented into this valuation from that experience study. If you could open with me in the, and for the record, my name is Pete Strong with Gabriel Roder Smith, and we're the actuaries for the pension plan. If you could open with me in this report to, starting with the discussion evaluation results on page one. The contribution is up this year mainly driven by those assumption changes that I was referring to when I first approached. The main part of those assumption changes that caused the increase was the reduction in the assumed investment return assumption from 7.0% to 6.75%, which was a recommended change. We're actually, that was the first step, we're trending over the next three years down to 6.50%. So this first step to 6.75% did cause almost a million-dollar increase in the contribution requirement. During the year ending 9/30 of last year, or actually the year that we're currently in, the fiscal year we're currently in, there was a total contribution requirement of 8.813 million, but a total of 11 million was actually contributed. So there was almost $2.2 million in extra money. That's been a trend over the last few years to increase the credit balance. So the credit balance is now up to almost $26 million, actually 26.6 million. It was at 22.8 million last year. So we add interest and the extra contribution of 2.2 million, that brings the total credit balance up. This is the result of contributing more than you're required to contribute, and so you have this pool of money that's available to draw from if the contribution ever does spike up. The contribution is not expected to spike up dramatically, but there was a market value loss this past year of minus two, almost minus two and a half percent. We're smoothing that with the actuarial asset smoothing method over a five-year period. So you're not recognizing a large chunk of that this year, just this 20%. But over the next five years, if there's not a subsequent recovery, you know, it's going to slowly bring your funded status down a little bit as you recognize another 20% of that each year, plus as we lower the investment return assumption from 6.75% down to 6.5%. So both of those two things are going to start bringing the contribution up a little more, and the funded status down a little bit, which, but you have that credit balance to draw from if the contribution does get too high. Turning to page two, the, there were an array of different assumptions that were implemented as part of that experience study. The rates of salary increase, the rates of separation from employment, retirement, disability, all of these were changed based on actual experience over the last five years. In aggregate, those assumption changes increased the contribution by $997,000. The actual experience for the year was negative. We had a negative $5.8 million experience. That means the unfunded liability increased, or actually the net surplus decreased by $5.8 million more than what was expected to happen. The main culprit is the investment return for the year. It was negative two and a half on a market value basis. Once you smoothed that in, the return on the actuarial value basis was 5.76%. So that trailed the 7% assumption, which, you know, caused an experience loss. There are actually some demographic gains on the liability side. There were fewer retirements than what we expected based on the assumption that used to be in place. There were more separations from employment than what we expected based on the assumptions. So both of those actually contribute to a gain on just the demographic liability side, which helped to somewhat offset the asset loss. If you look at the top of page three, that's a reconciliation in the contribution requirement for the year. We were at 10.69% of pay last year and 11.48% of pay this year, the main change being the change in assumptions. But also, there was a negative offset on the normal cost. The normal cost is coming down. Ever since the plan was reformed back effective 12/3112, new entrants come in under a different benefit tier, or slightly less, a smaller benefit formula than what ongoing employees had at the time. The more new employees that come in, the lower that normal cost. The normal cost, by the way, is the cost of benefits earned each year. And so that overall average normal cost rate is coming down over time as more and more new entrants. There were over 200 new entrants hired last year. So they come in with a lower average normal cost than the overall group as a whole, and so that brings that normal cost rate down a little bit each year. Any questions so far about any of this stuff? The funded ratio, I have a lot of numbers here, but I'm going to get to the two numbers that I think are the most important. If you exclude the credit balance from the assets, which I think is important because that's a reserve that's held to offset future contributions, so excluding the credit balance from the assets, your funded ratio is 101.3%. It was, it would have been 104% prior to the change in assumptions. That compares to 104.47% last year. So it's down about three, a little over 3%, mainly because of the asset experience, but also the assumption changes, too. Now, another thing, the actuarial value of assets, because we're smoothing in that loss, the actuarial value is now $41.5 million above the market value, okay? Our market value went down a little bit, but the actuarial value is actually still trending up because of the smoothing that's in place. Last year, the market value exceeded the actuarial value by $39 million. So we did a switch from the market value being higher to now the actuarial value being higher. Let's fast forward real quick to page 37, and I'll go through that calculation. In line E1 on page 37, the actual market value return was negative 24.9 million, or about negative two and a half percent, based on the total assets of about, close to $1 billion at the beginning of the year. The assumed amount of return, if the assets had actually earned 7%, was 70, a little over 70 million. That means we have a $95 million difference between what was actually earned on the market value with negative 24% versus what was expected to be earned at plus 70%. So that negative 95 million is being smoothed over a five-year period. We recognize 19 million of it this year, and if you look down the diagonal, we're going to be recognizing negative 19 million into the actuarial value of assets each of the next four years. What that's expected to cause is a drag on the funded ratio, or an experienced loss, unless we get a subsequent rebound in the market value, it's expected to cause an experienced loss each of the next four years. You can see next year's negative 16, the year after that, much smaller, negative 3.3, negative 2.9, and then 19 million the following year. The total amount of phasens this year adds up to negative 14 and a half, which is what leads to a 5.6, or 7% return on the actuarial value, even though you had a minus 2.48% return on the market. Let's flip back to page four, and I just want to point out that if market value had been used this year because of the loss on the market value during the year, the funded ratio would have been 97%, and the contribution requirement would have been 12.6 million as opposed to the actual of 9.7. So you can see, just coming under fully funded status by 3% from 100% to 97% would cause a, you know, roughly $3 million increase in the contribution because you're paying off that unfunded liability now, instead of just paying the normal cost each year. So there is some potential volatility, but I point that out also in connection with the credit balance that you have, that you've been building up in case that does happen. Let's turn to page 10. The total value of the liabilities for this plan, total present, on a present value basis, so looking forward over, you know, the lifetime of all current active members, as to what they're expected to earn over the next, you know, 25, 30 years, the total present value of all future benefits is about almost $1.1 billion. Compares to $1.03 billion last year. That's in line B3. The actuarial liability that's based on just past service benefits up to the valuation date is $965 million, and that's up from $916 million last year. You can see the assets are in line E, and we went through those just a minute ago, but, you know, the big switch is from the market value last year being over $1 billion versus the actuarial value being $980 million last year. This year, those switched places. The actuarial value is now over $1 billion, but the market value is $963 million. The unfunded liability is still negative. You still have a surplus, but it's come down from a surplus of almost $41 million last year to about $12.8 million this year. So, you know, that leads to the 101% funded ratio versus 104 last year. So, you know, outside of smoothing, you would be under that 100% threshold, but with smoothing, you're still above. I know that the market value returns so far in 2019 have been positive. I'm not sure that they completely offset the negative 2.4% return we had in 2018, but I think 2019's off to a good start to try to offset this. That concludes my prepared remarks. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions?
Questions? Mr. Albritton?
Well, on page 37, on the development actuarial value of assets, just a question.
Sure.
It looks like it's spread from 2018 to 2022.
Mm-hmm.
How does, I mean, it looks like we're going along at 14 million, then 16, and then it drops down to three, and then
Right.
Less than three. Why those two years?
It's because each year, and each year, we recognize 20% per year of that year's. So we come up with a, like, a running total of not only this year's phase-ins, but also the past four years. If you look at last year's, the 2017, we actually had a positive 80 million that was being phased in. And so that created 16 million a year that was phased in. So you have, and then you have each of the three prior years of phase-ins as well. 20% of each of the last five years deviations from expected are being added in each year. And we're gonna actually add in new unknown amounts, you know, '20, '21, '22. So each year, you have five years' worth of phase-ins. Some are positive and some are negative. And it just depends on how they, in what years each phase-in drops out of the equation. So like, next year, we're gonna drop off a $1.7 million phase-in, which was from 2014, okay? So we have just four instead of five years that are being added up, which leads to negative 16 million. Then we drop off 2015, which was actually a negative year. That was negative 12.8 million being phased in. Once that leaves the equation, we, you know, comes up to just 3.3 million a year being recognized.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Help clarify, because a lot of people are gonna say, "Oh, my, the city's got $26 million in the credit balance." In more layman terms, explain what that means and what we can use it for.
What that means is we've built up a reserve using excess contributions that the city has made in the past. I've actually, once the plan got to a fully funded status, I, you know, provided the trustees with some warnings that, you know, just because we're fully funded now doesn't mean we'll always be fully funded. You know, the contributions come way down. If you look at what the contribution requirement was back in, you know, six, seven, eight years ago, you know, it was, in some years, over 20 million right after the Great Recession hit. So, you know, there's always the chance that we could enter another recession again. And so I recommended, now the contributions come way down to, you know, the $8 million, $9 million range, it's probably not a bad idea to contribute more because the contribution used to be 20 million. Contribute a little more than what's required, and that'll build up a fund for a rainy day. That credit balance has built up because of that. You know, I think there's actually been a credit balance, at least a small credit balance for as long as I've been the actuary for the plan, because in past years, going back many years, the plan overcontributed in some years. And there'd actually been some weird years that some of that credit balance has been used, particularly right after the Great Recession. The full contribution wasn't paid in some of those years, and some of the credit balance was used. So it helps to smooth out that volatility, you know, once there, if there is a spike in the future and the contribution goes back up to, say, you know, 14, 15, 16 million, you can use some of that reserve that you've put aside to offset that contribution spike.
And it can only be used for the pension plan?
Can only be used to offset city required contributions in the pension plan.
And by having this balance, then, if we needed to make up because of a recession how much we contribute, if we didn't have this credit balance, then we would have to use our general revenue funds
Right, you'd have to contribute the full amount that was stated in our report.
Following up a little bit on Mr. Albritton's question, I understand the smoothing idea, but maybe for Mr. Ravens or you, I'm not sure. We've had three years of negative numbers. What are we doing, you know, what have we done or doing to try to offset that negative?
Well, until the most recent, you know, bad year in 2018, you actually had some really good years. Actually, turn to page 38, and you'll see, returns are gonna bounce around because this is, you're invested in return-seeking assets. And any asset that's return-seeking is gonna have volatility associated with it, you know, that's the risk involved to try to generate that expected return of 7 or 6.75%. Now, if you look back over history, you know, the market value has swung pretty dramatically. The market value returns in 2008 were negative 27%, but then 2009 was a positive 30%, and then it's positive 17.5%, but then minus .3%, then plus 13.9. So the market value returns are gonna jump around. You know, what we're looking at is for a long-term average to trend, you know, at the assumed rate of return, which is now 6.75. And if you look at the last five years, it's been less than that, been 5.39. But that is only because of the most recent year being negative. If you look at the last 10 years, it's been 10.26. So, and one of the reasons that I recommend lowering the return, you know, down towards 6.5 is because on a forward-looking basis, I don't think we're gonna see 10% average returns. We saw 10% average returns because that, we're in a 10-year bull market post-Great Recession. You know, we're probably not gonna see 10% returns per year in the future. In fact, most economists predict that we're gonna be in the 6% to 7% range for the next 10 to 20 years, which is why I recommended coming down to 6.5, and we're trending down that way over the next couple of years.
And then my final question has to do with the fully funded. We started out, you said at 104.
Mm-hmm.
We went to 101. We're now at 97. Somebody out there is gonna say, "Oh, my God, the city is just in trouble."
No.
You know, and the pension plan is in trouble.
This continues to be one of the best-funded plans in the state. The average funded ratio for the plans we work on is in the low 80s. So
Say that again, so that
The average funded ratio for plans we work on is in the low 80s.
And ours is?
This plan is at 101%. This plan is, relatively speaking, in very good shape. So, you know, just because you dipped down to 97% funded from 101, it's not the end of the world. You'll have an unfunded liability payment again, but another good market value a year, and you're back above 100.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, counsel? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.3? Motion?
Motion to accept the pension plan report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the actual valuation for 2019. All in favor's comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda Item 4.4.
Good morning again. I want to call back up the Finance Director Jay Ravens to introduce this item.
Good morning, trustees. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. Florida statutes require that the trustees annually provide their expectations for the pension plan's investment rate of return for the current year, each of the next several years, and for the long term thereafter. Consistent with changes in the rate of return assumptions that the trustees recently approved, staff's recommendation is 6.75% for the current year, 6.65% for the next year, 6.55% for the year thereafter, and 6.5% for the long term.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 4.4? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.4? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.4.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.4. Any comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Poirier, do you have anything further for us?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff and our consultant for pension trustee management. Appreciate the good news. We will adjourn the pension trustees meeting for April 15th and convene the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency, meeting of April 15th, or then the addition or corrections to the minutes of March 18th.
Motion to approve minutes?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of March 18th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda of the
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, trustees. I'm Bill Johnson. I did submit a card. I'd like to commend the CRA trustee, Popeless, for his comments at the March 7th meeting when he recalled the reason for bringing in the ULI team. It was because, as he said, what the city was doing wasn't bringing back the vitality in downtown. Let me repeat, because what was being done wasn't bringing back the desired vitality in downtown. Their report was dated September 2014, four and a half years ago. Recall that ULI, when they came in, said downtown Clearwater must continue to improve itself on its own terms for its own citizens. It must not try to simply become an extension of the delightful tourism district. Instead, it must become a vibrant and successful place in its own right, serving its own citizens. The city paid them $125,000. Then the city brought in HRNA, a nationally-recognized urban park design firm. Their mission was to work with the community to create a conceptual plan for Cochrane Park. The city paid them $378,000. Why was it worth that much? Because we wanted the right plan that would receive the citizens' endorsement at referendum. A referendum was needed if the plan was to move forward. The plan was approved at public referendum in November of 17 by more than 75% of the voters. Up until recently, this process has been one that welcomes public interaction and input. I suggest that the CRA hold a public workshop like you have done previously, a public workshop on the details you will be discussing later today in the council work session. It is difficult to provide comments on multiple design details that you'll be talking about in three minutes. Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda of the CRA? Thought I would close public comment and move to Agenda Item 4.1, Mr. Maxwell.
Approve the CRA food and drink grant program for property owners. Full application submitted by Main Street Clearwater Development LLC for interior building improvements at 412 Cleveland Street and authorize staff to negotiate a loan-to-grant agreement. Ms. Fogarty-France.
I am Ann Fogarty-France, CRA Business Assistance Manager. In October 2018, the CRA approved a time-limited grant program for property owners, and this was to stop, to support the establishment of new food and drink businesses that are open on nights and weekends. So Main Street Development, Main Street Clearwater Development LLC submitted a prequalification form on November 30th, 2018. So the planned business improvements were to convert their retail space into a restaurant, and these improvements will stay with the building and included HVAC system, grease trap, hood system, kitchen, bar, bathrooms, floors, walls, lighting, finishes, and walk-in wine cooler. Property owners must commit at a minimum to spending dollar for dollar and matching the CRA's grant funding, and these will be maintained for a minimum of five years. Main Street Clearwater Development LLC secured an eight-year lease with Starsean LLC or Roxy's, a food and drink business that'll stay open nights and weekends. And they submitted their full application on March 1st, 2019. On March 29th, 2019, a committee met of internal staff that included the interim CRA director, planning director, building official, and assistant and city attorney, and they judged the application on the following criteria: consistency with the goals of the downtown redevelopment plan, feasibility of the scope of services and their timeline, ability to provide an experience that does not exist in downtown, and the ability to meet the legal and financial requirements of the grant program. The committee found that the application met the criteria and recommends approval of the grant in the amount of $2,238,110.41. The Main Street Clearwater Development has provided documentation with cost data for $476,220.81 in expenses. If this amount is approved, the legal department will negotiate a loan-to-grant agreement, which will be sufficiently securitized to forgive the grant over a five-year period, and this agreement will be brought back to you for your approval.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 4.1? Mr. Albritton?
I'm really excited that this plan is working. We can see it working with both the retail restaurant people and the property owners. My question is, I've got the application, but some of it was cut off. It looks like the hours are open from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Is that and? Or is that it? Is that every day during those times?
Oh, they will be, yes. Their hours will be 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., at least Wednesday through Saturday, but I'm sure it'll be a little bit more than that.
Okay, and it says there'll be no other restaurant venue quite like our vision. Can you give me a hint?
One of the things that they will be doing is they're gonna offer a small plate option for all the entree items, and this is something that some people like, especially if they're gonna go to the Capitol Theater before or after a show. Healthy lunch options, their wine vintage will be included, wines from all global regions, wide selection of domestic craft and independent international beers, and they're gonna be on the cutting edge of the food delivery service and work with online website scheduling of pickup and delivery.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Popeless?
Thank you. Couple of questions, because there was a, I know there's going to be an additional conversation eventually about a new incentive program, because though I'm very excited Roxy's is opening, I can't go out there and say that this incentive program was a huge success since this was the only applicant that the landlords actually were able to find a tenant. And I know there's almost $700,000 left in the incentive program. So my question here is gonna be based on the comment that Councilmember Hamilton made about the new incentive program not being any more lenient than this one. And I look at this application, and don't get me wrong, I'm very excited, and I know there's a pro forma, a business plan with the numbers you said, but on the application itself, it says, unless this is just incomplete and this is what we were only given to see, there's no contractors who's doing the job. In addition to that, I was disappointed there will be no other restaurant venue quite like this, when, for instance, we were provided blueprints and documents of the ClearSky. So we seen a lot more. We knew, I think, what the vision was going to be. In addition to that, the other bullet points in Item 2, second page of the application, before photos of the site, property, was the CRA provided all of those additional requirements?
Yes.
Because the trustees were not. I think that is, I'm happy that you're recommending approval. I see constructions going very fast, so I'm very excited for them. Those questions and comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? I share the concern, because I'm not exactly sure what there will be. No other restaurant venue quite like our vision for Roxy's. I'm sure every businessman has that exact same feeling, whatever business he's opening up. And I'm sorry, we weren't provided more specifics as to what, what does that mean?
This tenant is a business owner of two restaurants down in Paso Grill on St. Pete Beach called Paradise Grill. He is someone who lives in the Harbor Oaks area. He has extensive experience, and we were provided with additional documentation as to the AC and ancillary work for the hood. We have, the committee met and talked about all the expenses that were provided, but they did provide a business plan. We can make sure that you get a copy of that.
Well, that doesn't quite answer my question about what's his vision, but anyway. But you did answer another concern that I had. He does have background in restaurants?
Yes.
And if you had two restaurants, how long have they been open?
I believe they've been open for over 10 years.
And then it says that it's gonna be open on weekends, nights and weekends, but you said it was not gonna be open on Sundays. Is Sunday
No, no, I'm sorry if I said that.
I mean, I thought I heard Sunday.
At least, the grant program requires that they are open at least Wednesday. At least, the grant program requires that they are open at least Wednesday through Saturday nights and weekends. And I'm sure that he will be open on Sundays, because one of the things that he wants to do is have a business similar to ClearSky on Cleveland. And it should be the quality of ClearSky on Cleveland with the type of restaurant that he plans to bring in there. So they will be open Sundays as well.
Okay. What we'll clarify for is, do we mean, when we say weekends, do we, because you said it again, weekends and then maybe Sundays. Is Sunday not considered part of the weekend in the plan?
As far as the restriction or what we're going to write into the, to the contract, it would not be, Sunday would not be included. What we asked them to, what we required of them was that they be open Thursday through Saturday.
Okay.
So that's really what the focus was. So they may be open, they, you know, they'll base that off of whatever makes sense from a business.
So all we're requiring is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings?
Correct.
And days also?
Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday through Saturday, yes.
Wednesday through Saturday?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so just want to make sure that we're all understanding what we're saying. Okay. Any other questions, council? Motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 4.1.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. The Agenda Item 4.2.
Can I, the CRA food and drink grant program for property owners, full application submitted by Clearwater Tower LLC for interior building improvements at 33 North Garden Avenue. Ms. Fogarty-France.
Good morning. Ann Fogarty-France, Business Assistance Manager for the CRA. As we previously stated, the trustees approved a grant program in October of last year. The Clearwater Tower LLC submitted an application in November on the 16th. The eligible interior and exterior building improvements were submitted, included update to HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and build-out of a coffee shop on the lobby floor of the building, which will have an outside seating area facing Gordon. Clearwater Tower LLC secured a lease with Clearwater Tower LLC doing business as Urban Coffee Bakery and submitted their full application on March 1. On March 29, the internal committee, March 29 of this year, the internal committee met and they checked the business plan and the application according with the criteria. And the committee found that the application did not meet the criteria. The coffee shop will initially not be open Wednesdays to Saturdays from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., nor does it have the ability to provide an experience that does not exist in downtown presently. So the committee recommended denial of the application for the grant.
Questions for staff on 4.2? Mr. Poglers.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of questions, Ann. I know that doesn't meet the nights and weekend criteria as well as, I think, some other expectations. I did like the concept of what they were doing, but again, realizing it doesn't fit. Were they at least recommended to apply for the facade?
Yes.
And the furniture grant?
Yes, they did apply for the facade grant, and they were granted a.
So we think they're going to go ahead then?
Yes.
Okay. Good, I'm glad to hear that as well, then.
It's currently under construction.
Copy that.
I'm sorry, it's currently under construction.
Good. So the total amount, refresh my memory, it's been a while, for the facade and the patio furniture, is that like 25 total or something? I don't remember.
It's 25,000 to have a fast track grant that our CRA director can approve. If they want anything over the $25,000, it has to come back to the CRA for their approval. The sidewalk cafe furniture grant, they're eligible for up to $2,500.
Okay. So did they apply for the 25 and the 25,000 and the 2,500? Is that what they?
They haven't submitted anything for the outdoor furniture as yet.
Okay. They did apply for the 25?
Correct.
Okay. Is that, oh, that was, he can approve that himself?
Yes.
CRA director, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public?
I just.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Condom.
Thank you, sir. Under our rules, they're not allowed to reapply if they could meet the criteria, if they say they're going to stay open weekends.
We did contact them. They were not interested in staying open, you know, nights and weekends. What you would basically have to do is extend the program. I mean, really, the application period is over now, so, you know, we could come back to the different people that are pre-qualified and open it back up for them, but that would be what we would have to do.
But they are still planning to open?
Yes.
Any other questions, council? Anybody from the public speak to Agenda Item 4.2?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.2.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2, which is to deny the grant application. Any comments, council? I'm going to be voting for this, but I have to make note, this applicant at least typed his information and provided us a whole lot more information than was provided in the other one. So I'm sorry that he's not meeting the guidelines. Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2, which is to deny the application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Maxwell, do you have any other business for the CRA?
Yes, sir. I did want to talk a little bit about the incentive program, now that we've sort of gone through the first iteration. Ann did some follow-up with those individuals that pre-qualified. There were a couple of different areas that they identified as obstacles for them as they went through this process. Some were, you know, more perception issues. One group said that the brokers and tenants who used, were used to working in more suburban areas, where you just walk everywhere, and noted St. Petersburg as an option there that they've dealt with previously. Some negative comments about some of the unopened spaces that we currently have, so basically the vacancies, the other vacancies. And then also some concerns about downtown generally as an unproven market. So those were, that was one sort of set. Another comment that was made was a sort of a request for free parking. Don't really want to come in, can't really do it, the folks that want to come in and rent from me want free parking. So that, you know, that is an issue that has been identified as well. So it wasn't the availability, it was the availability of free parking. And then the, probably the two that we can probably most affect are the tight timeline to secure the tenants that we had. There was some request to extend by some of the applicants because of the tight timeline. You know, that six-month period, they really just struggled to get, to get somebody in in that time. And then the final was some of the unfinished spaces. I only mentioned that one. You know, it is obviously a concern, but it is, the reason we have this program to some level is to finish some of those spaces. So, you know, it's sort of the, it was a concern, but it's also the goal that we've got to try to repair. We did dive a little deeper on the extension request or the comment. What was identified was maybe a two-to-nine month period, in addition, would help them to try to bring in some new tenants, those that pre-qualified and were unable to achieve it in six months. So that was a comment that they made. You know, we haven't brought forward an item today of, you know, extend the program or start a new program or anything like that. We want to provide you this information first and allow you to have some discussion or comment on it. You know, if we do decide to do a new program, we do have a few months that we would have to, several months that we would have to try to build it based on whatever the program would be. I know that there was some comment about the program that was provided to us in October of last year. That would still require a lot of backend work to try to generate, you know, probably taking us into the early fall, October, September timeline. So we do have an opportunity, if we would like, to try to extend it at least through that period and then discuss what we want to do between now and then as far as a new program is concerned. But if we did that, we would not recommend opening it up fully, only to pre-qualified folks, the folks that have already gone through that process, because there's a lot of staff time then to put something new together like that. So that was my, those are my comments on the incentive program. Is this something that you all would like us to try to extend, or is it something that you would like us to bring something different? And, you know, if so, is there any, are there comments about what that would be?
Mr. Poglers.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know that, just, and I'm going to speak off the cuff, I don't know that an extension of this program of two to nine months, and you say to create a new one would take until that timeframe anyway. I'm not sure an extension of that many months is going to overcome the challenges and perceptions that you identified. They've pre-qualified because they're willing to put some money into their place, but an incentive program is designed to overcome perceptions and challenges by all parties, not just tenants.
Right.
I mean, not just the landlords, but the tenants as well. So from my mind, even from the beginning, this program was designed for landlords and buildings to recreate the spaces, but with only one applicant coming forward, I don't think that program went, went far enough. I think with the remaining money and a new incentive program, we can overcome those challenges and perceptions and bring the tenants to the table to work with the landlords, because I know they're out there.
And, and, I, sorry, I.
Yeah, no, no, that's.
What I was going to say was, you know, from our perspective, it's going to, it's got to be a combination. Rosemary's working very hard to try to change those perceptions, you know, and fix some of those other areas that this program probably can't fix by itself. So it really is sort of attacking it from a lot of different angles. The two-to-nine months or six months or whatever the number would be, wouldn't fix it on its own. That's, I would agree with that. And not all of, you know, the concern of the extension was not necessarily every, from every group. I mean, some of them is simply perception-based. For one of them, it was, it was a straight-up parking issue, right? But, you know, an extension with some additional, you know, continued marketing and continued targeting of, of, you know, the perception issues that exist, you know, we believe there is, you know, no matter what, there is a chance to do it. I don't think we can have any incentive program that really changed the, changed the perception by itself. So it's all got to be sort of a team effort between all those things.
I would suggest, I would make a comment that the folks who've had their eye on Clearwater for downtown, and I speak on the tenant side, they're not worried about the perception, the challenges, old buildings that are totally not even a white wall ready, they're not worried about that. They're ready to spend their own money and make the investment. The incentive money is a bonus, they'll come, but it's, it's that, holding out the red carpet, the city of Clearwater going, yes, we want you, and there's an incentive program not just for the landlords and stay with the building. And I'm not asking for some great, I'm just asking to try to use the rest of the money that's in the incentive pool that wasn't awarded, allocated, in a more effective manner to actually meet our objective. And I think without trying to, which we haven't done, without trying to engage those tenants that are out there, and I know they've called the CRA department, I know, I know they're out there.
And we did engage, so at least the pre-qualified tenants. This came from the building owners and the pre-qualified tenants. So they did express some concerns about some of the perception and some of the infrastructure, those sorts of things. You know, so it came, kind of came from both. That doesn't, that's not to say that the folks that did not submit or did not pre-qualify don't have other issues that we did not pick up in this, you know, in this discussion.
Well, I guess the comment would be, the tenants who have applied, the ones that applied, that the landlords were working with, were they well-capitalized? Did they have history in either, in the food and beverage industry? Because if, if you have a weak someone coming in for the first time that doesn't have a lot of that experience, of course, that, that perception is going to be very detrimental to their decision. And then I would agree with what Mr. Horn said, no incentive money's going to overcome that. And so I just think that there is an opportunity right now to bring much stronger players capitalized into downtown, if we have a twofold incentive program, one that engages the tenants and the landlord. Because the only motivation for the landlord, right, he's going to build out his property, but what experience does he have going, overcoming the perception and challenges and marketing to these capitalized tenants? I just don't see that as a great path forward.
Okay.
So I don't know if anybody agrees with me, but I think the other incentive plan that was presented back in October, I think Mr. Corvino presented it, I think there's an opportunity to bring 15, and I don't see, first of all, why it would take nine months to put that back in place. And secondly, I think with a, with a four-month timeframe, once that, if that plan goes forward, again, whoever's at the top applies first gets the most money, but for landlord incentive, and then after that, it goes down to the smaller restaurants. We're not going to have all ClearSkies and Roxy's. So, and it's a one-shot deal.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I'm not saying that in nine months, it would take nine months to develop the program.
Right.
Just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. It's, you know, in talking to Mrs. Thompson, who obviously will be back in a month or so, you know, that was, that was a realistic timeline as far as the background work to get, because it is a more complicated, you know, plan.
Right.
And it's not, the concept was provided to us, not, not the bones of it, right? So the bones of it would be what she would need to come back and put some work in on. Our thought was that really, if we could do something like that, is probably October.
Mr. Albert.
Well, when we were strategizing after the last, I'll say, failed program, one of the things that we thought about was just going directly with CRA funding some improvements to the right-ofways and back of the buildings and not going through the building owners or the tenants, but making, instead of individual units, bringing those up to code is fixing the incoming utilities to those buildings that seem, through the ClearSky development, that they had big problems because they couldn't bring in power and, I mean, there were things that weren't available then, they spent extra money doing. Is there, should we have any more conversation on maybe doing that, instead of talking about an incentive right now and maybe getting the buildings better equipped to handle tenants that are coming in?
I think it, I think it depends on, on the specific situation. You know, there are a number, a number of issues with the utilities past the meter, which we couldn't directly, without the owner, do anything with. The improvements, many of the improvements for Roxy's, in fact, the, at least the total amount of incentive that we're providing, were those types of improvements, were improvements that upgraded electricity or upgraded the AC, upgraded those areas of the building that were substandard. You know, so that was a big part of what we're now funding. And that was a big part of the reason that we brought forward 100% of the requests rather than a 50 or 70 or a, or some lower number. They were, they were things that focused on utilities and, and structure. Now, we certainly have the ability, you know, to identify some utility upgrades that need to occur in, you know, within the right-ofway. And, you know, we always try to do that. I don't, I'm not sure that we have anything active right now, any.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, not in the buildings, but up, you know, if you're a contractor coming in to do work in a building, you're going to figure you're going to redo.
Rebuilding.
Infrastructure of that building, but when you go out into, I mean, you have to see where you're going to bring the utilities, and sometimes there's nothing there. I mean, you can go in the right-ofway, and I know we studied this, and I can't remember the details on it, but one of the ideas of the CRA was to upgrade the utilities in the right-ofways, so the, you know, you wouldn't have that extra cost of when you get outside the building to connect.
And we do have some upgrades in our downtown plan, in the funding that we approved back in, I guess it was August. You know, part of our upcoming expenditure plan includes those, some utility upgrades, not, you know, those are general, they're not necessarily targeted to specific areas or buildings necessarily, I don't, the plan hasn't been generated necessarily for that. But we are, we have budgeted funds to do that. Now, the other item I would bring up is that, you know, we do, we still have an incentive option out there that is not program-related, it is, you know, anyone can come and just request an incentive from the city. I just wanted to add that in as well. That, that program still exists. It's not really a program, it's just a, you know, an option.
One other question, Mr. Mayor. Parking study, when are we going to get the results of?
We have them, I've sent them out, hoping to have a conversation with the CRA about it in the next meeting in May.
Okay. I just wanted to have the conversation on the results of that, I think.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Condom.
I like the discussion that we've had, and I think the only alternative that's a bad alternative is doing nothing. And I would recommend extending the program that we have to those who have already applied. And I would recommend extending the program that we have to those who have already applied, to see if they could qualify. I think, and then also work on a new incentive program that's maybe half-year, half-year away, but then open it to your last suggestion, to applications that come in for any combination of things that you all, and we decide is a great idea. And that way, we're working toward a new program, but we're also providing incentives to those who would come up. You know, other people may have some great creative ideas if we could just hear them, and we might, might be able to not keep that money for nothing. And I do think the improvements, right-ofway improvements, utilities, is a good idea, excellent idea.
Counsel, I think we need, or trustees, I, I'm a little concerned about hearing, well, we know people who wanna come here, and we just need to reach out to them, or, you know, but let's, let's not short-sell the city of Clearwater, you know? People have invested in Clearwater, in ClearSky, and Lena Texiera, and Tony, you know, they have been here for a lot of years, and we didn't necessarily reach out to them. You know, I, I keep hearing, well, there are people who wanna come, and yet, they don't show up. They're not willing to make the investment, and they're not willing to take the chance. I mean, when I hear a story of, well, the parking is not, is an issue, excuse me, but if they were in St. Petersburg, there's paid parking in St., you have to pay to park in St. Petersburg, don't you, Mr. Maxwell?
In some areas, yes, yeah, depends.
In the downtown?
On the beach, right, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, you have to pay. We have free parking at night, and this program was geared to, you know, being open at night. And so for a businessman to say that, well, parking is a question, because it's not free parking, he just doesn't wanna, he's using us to get more money from us, is what it boils down to, in my opinion. And I think that we've got, you know, we had a plan, the people didn't wanna meet the guidelines, so extending it isn't gonna do any good unless we change the guidelines. And Mr. Maxwell has an awful lot of, I think, more important things to worry about in getting Imagine Clearwater done, and we can wait until Ms. Thompson comes back and not task him with doing something else, because that's what, you know, we get criticized on, you know, he hasn't done Imagine Clearwater yet. He hasn't been able to bring us back more than one thing at a time. And to ask him to do something else now on this, I think will, will throw off Imagine Clearwater, throw off the CRA work, and, and I'm, you know, I, I think we can wait until she comes back.
Let me just ask one follow-up question.
Sure.
You said that there is, well, reading the minutes, it said, "Program's expired, no applications may be submitted," and then Ms. Fogarty says, "There is still incentive program online, and the rest of the party should complete online form to start the conversation." And then you just said that also, that they still, what incentive is still available?
That, that is a different, it's a, it's not a program-related incentive, anyone can make a request of the CRA, and it's not necessarily the money that we're talking about. It, you know, we would then come back and identify to you what the, you know, what the request is, and decide whether or not it's something the CRA wants to fund. So it's more of a general, open incentive.
Well, and I would assume that the more that the private entity, tenant, landlord, invests, then the ask could be, could be higher, because there's no parameters or guidelines-
It's not defined, yeah, it is not defined.
Where's, is that on the website? Because I don't remember seeing an additional, so any-
It's, it's on the website, yes. I, you know, I can, we can send you a link to it, if you'd like.
Yeah, great, is, well, I have the link, I'll just look again, and is there a timeline when, is that gonna close, or that's just there?
It's just open, yeah, it's reactive.
Okay.
A reactive program, right.
Okay. And the final thing, just, there was gonna be an update today on the White Warehouse and MLK?
Yeah, that's my next item.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, only other comment I'd make, Mayor, is that if, if we did extend it, if we end up wanting to extend it, you know, it's only for pre-qualified. So most of the, most of the staff-side work has been completed on that, it is more of a reaction to, someone has submitted an application, we then judge the application, and quite frankly, it's, if somebody did that today, Ms. Thompson would be the one reviewing that application, because we would have to be processing the whole, the whole thing, so. But we can't, they can't bring it in as it is today, because the, the program has expired. What we can do is, one of a couple things, we can come back with an extension and agenda item at the next meeting and officially extend it. We can not do anything, in which case the program is, is no longer there, or, you know, if, if there's something that you would like us to start on, as far as creating a new program, that would be something Ms. Thompson would tackle when she gets back, and we, she can have a conversation with you all then.
But what's the difference between extending and this program that you and Mr. Poglay's just had an exchange on? I mean-
Someone could still make a request based on that, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, and, and I think it's incumbent on us and the community, that if you have a question or an interest, you know, don't talk to us, talk to the CRA director, and let him explain, you know, what needs to be done, so that they can hear, you know, directly from the director as to what the qualifications are, and there can't be any, you know, confusion. And then he can come back to us with the recommendations.
Would it not also be a good idea to advertise this program then, you know, until something else is in place, the-
Oh, sure, yeah.
-knows about this?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
We can do another press release and make sure, make sure that it's highlighted, not only on the CRA's website, but also on the city's website.
Mr. Horn.
Just a little confused, the, so I heard here, you know, maybe we ought to extend the timeframe, so whoever we had applied didn't have enough time could do so, and then I hear from Councilmember Poglay's, that the incentive program is closed, so now let's take the remaining money and use it in another incentive way. So, I, I, right now, if this meeting ends right now, then we will do other things. We're not gonna, I mean, we're not gonna do where you want it, and we're not gonna do what you want it.
If I could follow up to-
Unless you all can tell us what, what's next.
Right.
From your perspective.
So if I could follow up, it doesn't seem like I have support for a new program, and in the interim, while the CRA director is out, and there is a separate vehicle to be able to get to the CRA through an incentive option, I'm in favor of council member, not necessarily a new program yet, but in favor of extending, because of the amount of staff work that went into the pre-apps, and those people are already, and if it's just time, and they think a little more time can help, it doesn't require any more staff work, that's already been done, it just gives them more time to try to find a tenant. I'm good with that, as well as the additional thing that's still there, that someone can apply for, they have an option. I, I would, I would be good for that, so I don't know if that adds any clarity.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to extend the program for those who are, who are already-
I don't, I don't think we can make a motion today, it's just the directors' report. What we would do is come back at the next meeting with an item that, you know, you all could then approve.
Okay.
It sounds like that that's, like that extension is, you know, is favorable.
And, and this is just for the people who have already applied?
Correct, only, yeah, only those who have-
I have one more question. The, the remaining amount of money that's sitting there, that hasn't been allocated or applied for, is that pool of money, yeah, a total, please, and then also-
Five hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-two cents.
Okay, that, where you can go to the CRA's website, and anybody can still apply, is that pool of money available from, where, then where would the city-
So that, that, it is not necessarily the same amount of money, it's not necessarily the pool, you know, they're gonna come in, we're gonna look at it and make, make a recommendation based on whatever funds we have available. You know, we would prefer to keep it to this amount, because anything else would require a budget amendment, but-
I wouldn't expect it to be that amount, I'm just wondering, what pool of money would that come from, not from that pool, so it would be?
It's not intended to be from this pool, but it certainly could be, if you wanted it to be. You know, it's, it would be a question of where do we wanna get the money from?
Okay. Does that, is that my position on that, City Manager?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, well, Mr. Corvino, do you have, oh, okay, sounded like you wanted to say-
The, the only other item I had was relating to 115 MLK, which I think that's what Poglay's was referring to. We have been working with Hop Daddy, which is the, they were our lone applicant, mainly on issues related to, is what they were looking at going to be, is it permissible under our, under our code? It appears, in talking to planning and sort of refining things with them, that because they would want to, to stay within the footprint of the building, that it is possible, and they could actually get this permitted, from what we've seen so far. So at the moment, what we're trying to do is provide, you know, put together some terms of what, what a deal would look like if we wanna bring something forward, which we would hope to have back to the council, or, sorry, the trustees, you know, in the, in the next two meetings, to see if it was a deal that made sense to you. But, you know, as far as the other information, it all was complete, we just need to figure out whether or not it makes, you know, what kind of, kind of what the deal looks like, and that's what we're trying to outline now.
Questions, Counsel? Mr. Poglay?
I mean, to me, this is, the, the applica, it closed March 1st, but I'm not sure when they submitted their application, so we're, and I know we've been working on that before.
I think-
We've been working on, on that site, that RFP went out in January, so this is now three months, and we don't have, I think, the basic of, of knowledge for them to go forward or not. And I've heard from staff, they're gonna recommend forward, not gonna go forward, gonna go forward. That's problematic to me, I think we should have, we should be much further down the road with these people, so that we can, I mean, it's a great site, and it was only one respondent, and we're having difficulty trying to put something together.
A lot of that was related to timing, with Ms. Thompson going out, with Imagine Clearwater had a number of projects, so some of that's on us, just not being able to have the time to accelerate it as quickly as we would like. So, that's part of the problem.
So I think the next two meetings would be unacceptable, I mean, no later than the next meeting, to me, would, I mean, we either can put it together, or we can't put it together, because I've heard their finance, but they have no experience. I mean, that, that's some of the comments I've heard.
I, I think we would bring it to you as quickly as we can.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Because that's the only way you're gonna get it, is when we professionally can bring it to you.
Well, I think in the meantime, I'm going to reach out to the community.
Yeah.
Because if this one falls through, and look how much time we've lost for an incredible site, CRA spent another $250,000 to make that site that much more attractive and appealing, so that parking could be remedied. It's right across the street from the Nolan, it's a very, I think, a desirable site.
And I will tell you that the, the respondent also would like to get this as quickly as possible, so they're, you know, they, they wanna know one way or another, either way. It will be soon. I think it'll be probably at the next meeting, but-
Would it be appropriate, is it appropriate, probably inappropriate for, for council members? Could I, could I request a meeting to talk to these folks? Or is that, I know staff reviews and makes recommendations.
I am said, no.
No?
I would be very concerned about you acting on behalf of the CRA, that would make that meeting a sunshine meeting.
Okay.
So, I believe the answer to that is, you should not have access that they don't, that the rest of the council does not have. However, I don't see any reason why you should not have the application, if you have not received the application.
I only found out through an FOI request from the St. Pete Times, who the name of the principals were and the name of the restaurant, and that's the kind of data that would have been beneficial and helpful to me going forward, trying to assess, collect my thoughts, do some research in history, so that I can participate in staff's recommendation or denial as we go forward, so.
And then I actually do have just one quick comment here, we did receive one letter of response, or one response to the letter of interest for Fire Station 45. We'll have an item next month to bring that forward to you, but just wanted to let you know, we did receive one, it is closed now, we'll bring it forward to you the item next month. That's it.
Mr. Horn.
Just before we move, close the meeting, regarding applicant information for the trustees, can you all tell us how detailed you want that information to be, so we'll know to include that information in the agenda items that come forward?
I think all the information that staff reviews, I mean, and I'll go back to the application for Roxy's, that was a hand-scribbled, two-page document with no additional supporting, I mean, if it were left up to us to agree or disagree with staff, I mean, I would probably look at, we're, we're kinda, I won't say we're desperate, but that would have been hard to make a judgment with, just on those two pages.
Yeah, the, the application's about 300 pages, that was one of the reasons we didn't provide it, but we, in the future, we can certainly provide those things to you all.
I, I'm not sure we need, you know, an executive summary, which wasn't provided on the Roxy's thing, and then if we have questions with staff, you know, I'm a little concerned about our, trying to negotiate, as the city attorney said, with the applicant. You know, we ought to let our concerns be known to staff, but you need to provide us at least a summary, that if we need some more information, or want some more information, we can get. And, and it wasn't in, in the Roxy thing, you know? So I, I think, you know, to that point, you, you all could do a little bit better job of giving us info, but not, I, I don't know that any of us, you know, would read 300 pages, you know, and expect to do the staff work on that, that's, that's why you have the professional staff.
Mr. Robert.
And I concur with that, I think we need to, if we're making a decision, we need to have, and any decision we make up here, they ought to be in, they ought to be informed decisions, so a summary of it, if we have questions and go deeper, you know, we can ask questions on that.
The second comment that I would like to make, is that staff is really trying to stay positive, as it relates to the challenges that we're facing, and sometimes, when you listen to the discussion from some of the items, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of positivity out there. There are challenges that we cannot overcome, nor can you overcome necessarily, but sometimes I get the impression that we're just, we're just not doing well, we're just missing the mark. And, and if people are out there listening to this, then I think sometimes they'll get confused as to what it is we're really trying to do. Because, because I, you know, one thing we try not to do is to relay all of our conversations with business owners. Well, as you know, business owners are not perfect, and nothing is served by us coming here and throwing business owners under the bus, because they don't necessarily agree with either our incentive philosophy, or they don't like some of the terms. So, we, we, we're staying positive, I'd like for you all to be a little bit more positive, if we're not exactly meeting what you expect. Some of these circumstances are difficult to sort through, and I, I just gotta say this, I, I mean, I'm thinking, I'm hearing positive comments on the one hand, and then I'm hearing negative comments on the other hand, and so, we need to take back where we're solidly, you know, doing some good things, and you all appreciate those, or if we're doing not-so-good things, like I just asked you about the, the application, you can give us specifics, that, that's helpful, I just wanted to share that.
Anything further, Counsel, or trustees?
I would just comment that we're not making this stuff, we do, yes, the business owners that are, they're doing good, they've made the commitment, they love downtown, but the stuff that we bring here in these open conversations that we have publicly, is stuff that we're not dreaming up in our own heads, it's stuff we've heard about, and it has to do with the perception and challenges. So I think it is our job to bring this information to staff, to you, and have this collective discussion going forward, because if we don't, we'll continually extend these programs over and over and over, nothing's gonna happen. So I, I think it's a, a productive conversation that we have.
Mr. Robert.
And, and I don't think we're being negative about it, I think we're exactly what Mr. Poglay's saying, we're, we're laying what we're hearing from the community, because we represent the community here, and if, and I don't wanna come down on staff, I think we have a great, and all our employees are great, but when things don't move, then it's kinda your job to say why, and explain to us that situation. And you can do it in the private meetings, and relay, you know, to us exactly what it is, but it's kind of our job to be here and say, let's, let's get moving on certain things, so. I really don't like being negative up here, and I think for the most part, things are moving along well right now, but when they have a lag, it's up to us to say something about it, we just can't- about it, we just can't, I think that's our job to do that, so, that's all.
And I think it's a sense of frustration over some delays, Mr. Horn. Did that, you came forward today. Okay. Anything further, trustees?
I will re-adjourn the Community Redevelopment Agency and reconvene the work session for April the 15th, Agenda Item 3.1. Mr. Horn.
Thanks, Mayor Council, we have a homeless initiative presentation from Gabe Para. We do this on a periodic basis, just to keep you all informed.
I'm Gabe Para, I am the Community Development Manager, and it is my pleasure today to present the Homeless Initiative Update 2019. But before we go deep into what I'm going to tell you, let's go back in time, year 2012. At that time, we had close to 360 homeless in the downtown, the beach, and the gateway area. The city contracted the services of a homeless consultant, Dr. Robert Marbus, to give us a set of guidelines, and through his research, he gave us five key points that gave way to what we call the Homeless Initiative, and also our motto, give a handout, not a handout. The five key points, I'm going to touch upon them very briefly. The first one is, we had, we had, and we have accomplished it to some extent, to change the culture and perception within the city and the city employees. Especially, the, giving a dollar or a meal without getting any wraparound services, it enables the behavior. So we also created the Homeless Committee, which is comprised of several city departments, like the Police Department, Sally Waste, Personal Recreation, departments that are involved in homeless issues on a day-to-day basis. So we also provide the overview of the Homeless Initiative to every new employee at the orientation, so they will be on the same page like the rest of the city employees, and they have the basic information of what is the city's position on homelessness. We continue disseminating the cards that you have in front of you, those have the information that is basic to provide answers when somebody approaches the city or the city employee. We also encourage our fellow city employees to keep with them at all times, this small wallet-sized card, which has, again, basic information that if somebody needs some help, they will be able to refer them to the proper agency. The other key point was to realign the magnets. We provide, we continue encouraging all of those agencies that would like to provide meals, to utilize the vacant lot adjacent to the Police Department. Also, we are in contact communication with the agencies and churches that provide meals at this particular site, also at the Peace Memorial Center Church, I'm sorry. And we try to get on the same page and unify the meal times. That will help a homeless individual to, to have a little more sense of direction in one day, they know at what time we're going to get the meal, and what time we're going to get the second meal, so it will be positive to give him the opportunity to perhaps to do something in those hours in between, to do something more positive, to get out of homelessness. With the enforcement of our ordinances, we really keep an eye on everything homeless in the city. The Police Department has done a fantastic job, you know, addressing all the issues related to homelessness. Businesses, especially in the downtown, we encourage them to obtain the no trespass signs. That is the best tool that a police officer would have, if a business owner is complaining or, you know, has this problem, that someone is trespassing on his or her building. So this is the tool that we need to have, and every business can have it, post it. They need to come to the Police Department, fill out an affidavit, and then come to the city offices. We sell them for $16, which is exactly what it cost us to have it made. There is no profit derived from these businesses. Through the ordinance warnings and the trespass, this is some data that we have, we are comparing 2017 and 2018, and the ordinance warnings, they went down in all three districts, and the trespass warnings is also something that, the numbers went down, especially on District 2 and District 3. Talking about trespassing, this is an area of, an area next to Drew Street and the overpass of US 19, there were a large number of trespassers there. It's been a monumental task and a wonderful positive result from several departments, Personal Recreation, the Police Department, Stormwater, Code Enforcement, and now we can see there were several trucks of debris that have been removed, and now we will be able to see, the police officer will be able to see from the bridge, what's happening down there, because it's not covered anymore. This is the area that we have, thanks to the collaboration with the other departments. We cannot do this just ourselves, this is another of the five key points given by the homeless consultant. We have partners that we work closely, closely with them. The case manager from Direction for Living, she comes and works directly with the downtown bike team, she goes out and addresses homeless in the street, this is part of her job, and one of the great things that she does is that she's able to identify many of those persons that they are mentally ill, but they are eligible for, for funding, for services, for social security. She will take them to the right place, she will be able to work the things that they are unable to do, and obtain those services. Again, she goes out with one of the, our police officers of the downtown bike team. The other, other of our partners is HEP, some people say HEP, which is the Homeless Empowerment Program. They have the Veterans Building, they house all of those veterans that come after serving our country, and they end up homeless, because of different things that happened to them over there. And this is a very important case. Matt came back from Afghanistan, he is an Army veteran, he was accepted at the HEP Veterans Building, and stayed there for a year, went through case management, now he has moved out of those apartments, bought his own house, started his own landscaping business, got married, and in January, he welcomed his little baby daughter, Cora. This is a very, very nice story. Pinellas Home, they have the shipping containers, the refurbished shipping containers, each one has three very nice dwelling units, with AC, heat for those two or three days of cold that we have here in Florida, and they stay there for somewhere between 60 and 90 days. After that, then they're able to move through, you know, with the help of case management, to transitional housing, or even sometimes to permanent supportive housing. Pinellas Safe Harbor, safe, Pinellas Safe Harbor is the recipient of those individuals that receive the notice to appear. Let's say a homeless person is committing a transgression, is violating an ordinance, so at that time, the police officer would give him or her the option, you either go to jail because of what you're doing, or you could go to Safe Harbor. You will enter Safe Harbor, go through the management, they have a service, many case managers helping them to navigate and to identify what are the needs that they have in order to get out of homelessness. And they receive a notice to appear, to be before the judge at a later date, so that this is something very important that we have. Last year, they served a staggering number of over 380,000 meals at the Safe Harbor. Other of our partners is RCS, they have two wonderful programs, the Grace House and the Haven, which has the domestic violence. Many women become homeless because they need to, they have to escape an abusive relationship. From the 451 peoples that they served in 2018, 148 were from the city of Clearwater. This is Diane. Diane found herself homeless with three grandchildren. She entered the RCS, worked there, graduated with flying colors, and after a year, she was able to move to her own place in Clearwater, and the best part of it is that now she works at RCS in a different department. This is a very touching story. The Salvation Army of Upper Pinellas County, they try to help those agents, those families that are at risk of becoming homeless. If they need some utility assistance, or sometimes rent, the Salvation Army of Upper Pinellas will help them to prevent them from becoming homeless. I don't know if some of you remember the Chip Center, maybe 12, 13, 14 years ago? Now, this is a property owned by the San Vincent De Paul, and they have the Resource Center. It is a wonderful program that the city helped with the CDBG funds, we gave them over $21,000 to help them, you know, get up, keep up and running. They have these classes for homeless, it's open to the public in general, but right now, homeless are knocking on the doors. They will receive job coaching, from training, even how to fill out a resume, and they're going to graduate, the first group is going to graduate this Friday. Forty-two homeless signed up for the first day, well, not all of them showed up for the full day of classes, but there is a large number that are going to graduate. They partner with PERC, that runs the Stars Program, and in cooperation with HEP, they are receiving the classes. This is just the beginning, the idea that they have is to have different classes. Right now, they are doing some construction-oriented, those are the first classes they are receiving. This photo is on the grand opening. The HLB, what is the HLB, is the infrastructure that oversees all the homeless issues in Pinellas County and the continuum of care providers. We, as a city, we are a direct part of the HLB, we are a part of the board, the funders' council, and the providers' council. This is a breakdown of the funding that we get from the General Fund, to the five agencies that I just mentioned before, and the HLB. At the beginning of the year, in January 24th, we had the Point-in-Time Count. For those who don't know what it is, we go out and say, we, we were 360 volunteers in Pinellas County, that we go out there and survey every person that we find that is experiencing street-level homelessness. That is very important, because the data that we receive is submitted to HA, to see how the funding is going to be for the next year. Some of the things that we identified in the survey is like, the financial problems is the, the main reason of people becoming homeless here in Pinellas County, followed by medical disability and/or family issues. This is data exclusively directed to the city of Clearwater. 21.5% of the homeless interviewed, they self-reported that they stayed mainly in Clearwater. There were 199, again, that is 21.5%. But the important thing is that, we have 199, but the downtown bike team has a count, every single month, they go and physically count how many homeless we have here, that this is the same time of the month, at the same day, it's usually coinciding with the filling of the vacant lot at the Police Department, which is one of the biggest ones, but they go from the beach to Presley Park. So at this time, we have, according to that data, somewhere between 75 and 95 homeless, give and take. Those are the numbers of homeless that we have counted directly. This is self-reported data from the Point-in-Time, the one that you see on the screen, which is, they say at the day of the count, there is someone in St. Petersburg, or in Tampa, because this is nationwide, and they say, okay, where do you usually spend your time? And say, oh, Clearwater, that's what this, that number is there, and it's self-reported, we don't add and or subtract anything of that information, I just wanted to give you that clarification. When the, the homeless consultant, Dr. Marbus, came here, he noticed that it was a large number of homeless that were used as distributors of the street drug spies. It was really intense, and it was so rampant, and actually, I was with him in one of those trips that we did through the homeless community and the filling times, and we witnessed, in a fraction of a second, spice dealings, like that. So thanks for the wonderful job that Police Department did, the spice-related arrests went down 21%, and this is a completely different scenario that we have at this time. So what if we're going to focus for the next year? Number one, we will continue monitoring the implementation of Dr. Marbus' recommendations. We keep an eye on the housing first and coordinated entry system from the HLB, which in the 2016, the city adopted the resolution to be in line with the mandate from HA, that all the continuum of care providers in the country gear all the efforts to housing first, and then the wraparound services. But first, get him out of the street, put him into housing, and then the wraparound services to help him. We will continue monitoring the street activities, and not only in the vacant lot and all the other places in the city, and of course, the policy and funding activities. And with this, I conclude my presentation, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Para? Mr. Pogly?
There is a question. I commend the report, I commend the city's, you did an incredible job, I commend the city's continued efforts. I was the representative serving on that board six years ago, and, and to see the city continually, not only putting resources financially, but, but staff, and it's a, it's a worthy initiative to take part of. The question is, is this presentation given to the Downtown Development Board? Because if it's not, it should be, there's some Downtown Development Board members that do not understand the duration, the length of time we have really been focused and contribute, I mean, we've been involved in this.
I was invited once at the DDBET, and gave a little review of the presentation, we can make it.
Yeah, well, this is the most latest, I don't know if they-
No, it wasn't, the one from last year.
Yeah, it would be a benefit now with new Downtown Development Board members, for them to see this.
Okay, I'll take another.
Any other questions, counsel?
No.
Mr. Para, you talked about spice, but you didn't talk about opioids. Is that a problem with the homeless population?
Well, they, what we saw at the time, it was that the spice usage was really high, and that's why we concentrated and witnessed the spice. Other than spice, I think that Police Department would be, maybe Sergeant Fidelis would be able to give you a better answer on the opioids.
Good morning, Sergeant Fidelis, clear, please. The opioids, yes, it's part of what the homeless have issue with substance, but it's not the main one, spice was the main one, that's why we aggressively- That's why we aggressively addressed it with our narcotics unit and other departments, targeting mainly the drug dealers, which sometimes were homeless people. And that's why you see the decrease. We really targeted the supply. Therefore, there wasn't as many, obviously, consuming. This was the arrest went down. The opioids is an issue, obviously, nationwide. But I wouldn't say it's more prevalent because it's more expensive. So France would probably prefer spice. So the supply is reduced. Therefore, that kind of activity has been reduced also.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
I just want to clarify one thing. Excuse me. For someone to get a trespass, the actual placard, anybody can purchase that, and that's fine. But there's a process. So if a business owner would like to get a trespass affidavit signed, they have to come through me. I review it and see if it qualifies. It would have to be documented, issues of homelessness, prostitution, or drug dealing. So we try to limit that due to, for safety.
And Mr. Parra, another question I had was, you gave us the number of people that use Clearwater as an address for RCS and I think the Haven, for Pinellas Hope and for RCS. And it was roughly a third. But you did not indicate how many people were sent from Clearwater or used Clearwater as an address for Pinellas Safe Harbor?
No. The information that I just presented was not that that is an address. It is that at the point in time, they ask, where do you usually spend your time? But it is a street, people experiencing street-level homelessness. That with the aggregate data...
No, sir, you're not understanding my question. You gave us the data of how many people gave Clearwater as a point for RCS and for Pinellas Hope. You do not state how many people from Pinellas Safe Harbor.
Mayor, I'm not certain that we have that data. But we'll see if we do and provide it to you. And if we don't have it on file, we'll...
Well, because where I'm going with this is, we're giving $100,000 to Safe Harbor. But I don't know, you know, where the numbers come from. Yeah. And I understand that Safe Harbor, that the Clearwater address, a lot of times, is not the city of Clearwater. But we get quest, well, you know, Clearwater, and you find out that they've been picked up near the airport, or they've been picked up in Feather Sound, or, you know, outside the city of Clearwater. And I'm just trying to determine, you know, should we... Has the number gone down, the percentage gone down since the Dr. Marbot, you know, report? You know, that's roughly a third of what we are sending, you know. Were we at a half? Or were we at, or has it gone up percentage-wise?
We'll look.
Okay.
Yep.
Because we may, we may need, at budget time, need to revisit how much we give to these agencies.
Understood. I'll try to get that number back to you.
Well, I'll let the chief. Safe Harbor is at least popular.
I'm actually correct that Safe Harbor does have many people that are articulated as being from Clearwater, but there's unincorporated. That number is usually around 400 a month is what floats into Safe Harbor that has that Clearwater designation, but they don't break it out for us. We do track, and we can get you that number, everybody that we send and we refer that we... And it's usually about probably 40 a month.
Yes.
40, 50 a month. The thing I also think you want to keep in mind when you're making some of those decisions, though, those 400 people that are down there, because the population of Safe Harbor is about 350 a month, a day. If the place isn't fully funded, those people are coming out and they're coming somewhere. And we're going to have to deal with that. So there's a huge advantage to the unincorporated ones from Clearwater that could drift into our border and having them in a place where they're getting services and they're kind of, you know, a better place than on the street.
I think possibly say that for the other programs too, right?
I think all of them are. I think they all have a niche that are very important to each one. You know, the Safe Harbor is more that entry-first, street-level. Some of the other ones are a little more transitional and productive in that sense.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Horn?
When you look at some of the reasons why Safe Harbor would be recommended over jail, some of the offenders don't want to go to Safe Harbor. So that alternative is jail. And we are working with the sheriff's office to address, you know, some of those reports we get from offenders who say, well, I don't want to go to Safe Harbor. Well, why? You know, are there some disincentives there that caused them to react that way? But they have a choice. They either go Safe Harbor, or they go to the county jail. They don't have the option to go back to the street. But our numbers are smaller, and it is the least popular place. And we have to constantly monitor that. So we'll get you the, you know, kind of what we do, but...
And like I say, I understand that a lot of that is really not Clearwater. It's just Clearwater is what comes to everybody's mind because of where they are. But I think would be, you know, at least have some idea.
If I could ask for a little more data, and then I think also, I just have a...
I have a question, you know, for Gabe as a, since I'm a representative of the board. The most critical, at any one day, the most critical aspect, am I right that there is no, there's no place for a family with children to go to on any one day? There's a critical need for homes.
Yeah, this is a big challenge, specifically in Pinellas County. There is no affordable housing. And there is no specific program for families with children that are homeless. Now, most of the shelters, they accept individuals. Some receive families like HEP or RCS or the Haven, they receive families there. But in general, there is a deficit. We don't have resources. We don't have dedicated continuum of care and our program specifically for family with children. Most of them are sleeping in cars.
Are there not hundreds of applicants, but no homes available?
Oh, yeah. That is, we don't have, there is no affordable housing in Pinellas County. So this is something that, yes, we have a mandate from HAAD, housing first. Get them out of the street. We don't have affordable housing. That's a struggle that all the continuum of care providers, that they have the people ready to graduate from shelter to their homes. But there is no affordable housing.
Mr. Pogless?
Yeah, just to request some more data, Denise, on Pinellas Hope. What, could we get, what are the total operating costs of Pinellas Hope? We could find that out. What percentage of $100,000 goes towards that? Because I know that the sheriff was always battling county commission because it was coming out of his budget. And it's actually a whole Pinellas County destination for this intake. And so I'd just like to see what the breakdown is now. What are the municipalities that are still not participating?
It's about $2 million.
I'm sorry, to clarify, you mean Pinellas Safe Harbor?
Yeah, I did. Yes, not Pinellas Hope.
It's about $2 million. The budget is $2 million.
Do the other municipalities...
Yes.
...large participates now, for instance?
And this is over $100,000. This is just a part of the $2 million that they have.
I'd just like to see the breakdown, just for your sake. Thank you.
The cost is about $13 per day per resident. That's the average breakdown that I have. There are 470 beds.
Each community has its own idea of what homeless problem it has. And a lot of the beach communities, you know, do not participate because they don't feel like they have a homeless, you know, problem. Other communities feel like they offer different services. And so consequently, their contribution might not be as large, you know, as ours, or maybe greater than ours. So I don't think it's fair to say, well, let's look at what other cities do and try to gauge how much we're going to give based on what other communities do. Because each city's, you know, feeling is different on that.
There's another quite startling statistic too. And that is, in the school system, we know that there are somewhere between 3,000 and 7,000 homeless students going to schools. And this is the first year that we are actually having some success working with the school board because we don't know how to identify those students. We can't, they can't give us their names, HIPAA laws. And we're trying our best to reach those students to find out if they're getting any services or not.
Some of the continuum of care providers, they are targeting the students that are homeless. And there is maybe one or maybe two participants that they provide a council that they are beginning to show up at these meetings where they are giving us the data, the student that they know they are homeless or they are couch surfing. So, which is another big problem because those children are very vulnerable. But still, they manage to go to school. But we don't have any data yet. This is just the beginning of this program that some continuum of care providers are presenting at the providers' council.
So we're hearing again and again about affordable housing for families. Do programs like Habitat for Humanity and other programs that we have that provide workforce housing help? Or, you know, are we able to say that, or...
There's several different components of affordable housing. There's certainly the transitional housing and permanent supportive housing that some of our providers, like RCS and HEP, provide. And then there's, if you look, perhaps, and not to overuse the term, but the continuum of affordable housing issues. Then we're getting into income-qualified, multifamily rentals that we're familiar with, like Garden Trail and others, where it's a percentage of income is capped as a monthly rent. Or it's subsidized rentals provided through a number of different programs to help families and individuals gain access to those units. And then we get to perhaps more of the top or upper end of that, which would be a Habitat for Humanity home that's homeowner-qualified, income-qualified. But it is homeowners, they're paying a mortgage payment, they're paying their taxes, as we're all familiar with. I would say that's all part of that program. I think, and I believe we're going to be talking about this in May at the special council work session, about workforce housing, which is that that area perhaps of 80 to 120% of area median income is often left unaddressed by any of those that I've just mentioned. And I would say that that's a big concern of ours as we move forward, not just here in the city of Clearwater, but certainly in Pinellas County.
Thank you very much. Unless there's any other questions. Great. Appreciate it. Good discussion there. Counsel, let's take our recess. Is there just one bathroom still open? It's upstairs?
Second and third floor.
The one downstairs is open now? It wasn't earlier?
No, Wim was not there, but nothing there.
It's open now.
All right. So seven minutes, 10:05, or, yeah, we'll reconvene at 11:05.
Removal of pedestrian bridge. So what's our recommendation on the bridge?
You look like you've lost weight, sir. You look like you've lost weight. Yeah, you're looking very trim and fit. I'm very jealous. Is that it, really? How much walking do you do? Oh, that's a lot. I can definitely see. Yeah, I get that. I love hearing those. I do too. They're just saying sweet words, not true stuff.
I think you should do it from there though. So this is to have discussion, but this is not.
Fifteenth Agenda Item 4.1, Mr. Horn.
Ratify and confirm amendment to the ICMA Administrative Services Agreement for the 401A Money Purchase Pension Plan and the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan authorize a payment of fifty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars to ICMA and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Ravens.
Good morning, Councilmember Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This item is a request for approval of an amendment to an ICA agreement that council approved in September two thousand eighteen, as well as approval to remit fifty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars of accumulated ICMA plan refunds to ICMA. At the time the agreement was brought before you, it was anticipated that an expected market value adjustment on nationwide fixed income investments to be transferred to ICMA could be negated by a delay in transferring the assets. We subsequently learned that the delay would also involve freezing employees' investments that would not be available upon employee retirement, termination, unforeseen emergency, et cetera. We did not consider that to be, excuse me, an acceptable alternative for our employees. The market value adjustment as of the transition of the assets in March two thousand nineteen totaled one hundred and nine thousand dollars. The plan has fifty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars of planned fee refunds from ICMA that we have previously deposited into the city's Treasurers Escrow Fund to designate that the monies belong to the ICMA plan rather than the city. We would request approval to remit these monies to partially satisfy the market value adjustment of one hundred and nine thousand. The balance of the one hundred and nine thousand dollars will be reimbursed to ICMA via an ICMA fee adjustment. The fee increase of point zero zero eight percent will increase the ICMA administrative fee from point zero four nine percent to point zero five seven percent for a period of five years. To put this fee increase in perspective, the estimated employee fee savings per the September two thousand eighteen Agenda Item was one hundred and sixty dollars annually for each fifty thousand dollars in employee plan assets. This fee increase will decrease the expected savings by four dollars annually to one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Employees will still recognize a significant fee savings per the new amended agreement.
Any questions for staff on Agenda Item 4.1? It'll be on our calendar for Thursday. Agenda Item 5.1.
Approve Agreement Number Eight with Ultimate C and G LLC for a daily temporary mobile C and G fueling service for Clearwater Gas in Clearwater, Florida. Approve an increase to purchase order number one eight zero zero one one zero two in the amount of one hundred and six thousand dollars for the period April twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen through May thirty first, two thousand nineteen, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Langill.
Good morning, Brian Langill, Assistant Director for Clearwater Gas System. Unfortunately, this is our compressor unit that's at our natural gas filling station that we're still having issues with. We did do repairs to it last month in the middle of March. All the parts did come in in the early portion of March and the contractor came in and did those repairs. Unfortunately, we're still incurring oil usage on the primary compressor unit. It's been passing through the cylinder heads and going into the receiving tank. So we're currently monitoring that right now. We've changed out the oil to a higher viscosity oil and in an effort to try to break it in. That was on the advice of the manufacturer, Gardner Denver, which they're located in England. That's where the compressor is manufactured, and those are where the parts are shipped from. And that's one of the reasons why we've seen so many delays is because of the parts being from out of the country. They're coming in and getting delayed in customs and plus also the fact that they're being manufactured and it takes a long time for those parts to come in. So we are, as of this morning, the compressor was running in a test mode. We're cautiously optimistic that it will be successful, but however, we do want to proceed forward with an increase to this purchase order to be on the safe side and make sure that we're refueling our garbage trucks in a timely manner.
Questions for staff on 5.1? Mr. Langill, why are we having to pay for this if, I mean, it's, this is the third time we've ordered the same pieces of equipment?
No, no, we've been ordering more equipment every time. The, our consultant, Trillium C and G, we've used them for the maintenance on the compressor unit. We ordered parts, did the repair, and then other additional parts further into components in the compressor were failing then at that point. So this third time was all the parts were replaced that were moving parts in the system right now. But we're still, for some reason, we're still seeing an oil consumption on the unit. So we need to, you know, we've changed out the oil to a higher viscosity oil to see if that would fix the problem and break it in properly.
But I'm still not understanding, if we're following their recommendations and their recommendations aren't working, why are we still having to foot the bill for recommendations that aren't working? Don't they have some responsibility?
Well, they're a third party and the equipment is out of warranty, so there's no more obligation from the original, where we purchased the equipment from. You know, we work with Universal Air. We, you know, we originally purchased the equipment from them and we got the parts through them, but however, they're not obligated to pay any of the monies for the parts.
But it's almost a million dollars now that we're talking about, right? It would've been cheaper to fly somebody from England over here to take a look at it.
Well, we've had people in this country that were experts on the equipment take a look at it.
Mayor Chuck Warrington, Managing Director of the Clearwater Gas System. There's no doubt, this unit is beyond its warranty period and it is not a good fit. We're, we have on order a replacement or a mobile unit that's going to go into the station and will operate the stations and put us in a position where we can take this old unit out, ditch it, and get a new unit in its place for the future operation at station. This is a patch we're just having to do, and we're optimistic, I mean, right now it's holding the oil. We hope that this month we'll be able to let this unit go. If we, if not, we'll be stuck with waiting, keeping the unit in place until August. August is when we're expecting to get the new, the third compressor unit that we'll be able to put in the station. It's, unfortunately, it's a piece of equipment that did not perform like we thought it was going to perform years ago.
Mr. Auburn.
Well, you just answered my question. It was, I thought we had ordered a new.
It is.
Made in America thing that, but to, you know, the mayor's comment, I mean, I hope we're not ditching a million dollars. I mean, if we fix this thing up, what can we, can we sell it on to some, can we recoup some money when we make the change or what's the plan?
Well, we're not spending a million dollars on the unit. We're spending a million dollars on the, on the use of a temporary unit on site that's fueling our vehicles and whatever. We will, when we pull the unit out, we'll put it up for auction to sell it, but I suspect it's not going to render much, much value in the resale market because it's, it is a foreign piece of equipment that I just, I wouldn't buy it. I can tell you that.
And to further point out, we are doing a request for proposal to do a comprehensive analysis of the station. That's in purchasing right now. They're reviewing that right now. That should be out in the next few weeks to get a vendor on board to do a full analysis audit of the station. And so that would be all the other pieces of equipment that are there right now. They would look at that and see what needs to be changed out or added in order to make the station work properly and, you know, meet our needs for the next ten years. And so that's our goal is to move forward with that as well.
Any other questions, Counsel?
I guess.
Mr. Hamilton?
The question asks, the revenues from this station, what are they in relation to what the cost is right now?
Well, the station, we've used about, sold about two million gallons. And so we're right around the dollar, averaging around dollar thirty, dollar forty a gallon to there. So that's, you know, that's what our revenues are on the station. So, I mean, the revenues are more than what we've spent so far. And keep in mind that, you know, the solid waste department is seeing those fuel savings as well. They have not experienced any improved, additional cost on this. It's all been absorbed by Clearwater Gas.
So they, I mean, these, these costs that we are approving are being covered by revenues coming into the station anyways?
Yes, they are.
Okay. This is not just money going out with nothing coming in.
Consent? Agenda Item 5.2.
Approve a mutual use agreement with Tampa Bay Water for the installation of natural gas distribution mains and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Langill again.
Yes, this is up in Pasco County, Tower Road, which is just north of State Road Fifty-four. Counsel, you have approved other mutual use agreements with Tampa Bay Water where we've done crossings to go from the south to the north, just to simply cross that right away. This one is to install a gas line in parallel with there right away, so we would be running for a mile or two a segment of gas main to go up that road, Tower Road. And so there's two areas, one, mutual use area one, and then mutual use area two. The only difference with area number two is that Tampa Bay Water has two easements themselves of where they intersect themselves, and so they just wanted to identify that area right there as area number two. But it's all one big, one continuous piece of gas main.
Questions on 5.2? Mr. Pogless.
This will be a main that will bring forth new hookups, new customers?
Yes.
How many new customers is this area going to supply?
This is for the Bexley Del Webb subdivision right now, and it's over, right over a thousand customers. But, you know, it keeps growing because as we get more information, you know, they continue to build further up north every time, so we're having a lot of builder and developer agreements getting signed up there.
All right. How long before we anticipate we may actually start hooking up some of those residents? Like how much more after we run this one mile of main?
Chuck Warrington again, Managing Director. We actually turned on about fifty customers last week using a temporary tank out there. So this line will, will take, will eventually serve those customers. But like you said, there's about a thousand customers in this subdivision, and then behind this subdivision, we estimate there's at least twenty-five thousand homes going to be built in that area, and this is the main trunk line that'll serve those.
Thank you. An additional twenty-five thousand customers, Mr. Warren?
That's right. Pasco, we've crossed twenty-five thousand customers this year, Clearwater Gas did. We'll cross twenty-six thousand by the end of the year, and I would say before Pasco builds out, we'll be at seventy-five thousand customers.
And that would make us how large in terms of public?
That'll probably put us, we're thirty-fourth largest in the country now. That would probably put us in around the twentieth or twentieth, somewhere in there.
And what's the largest one in the country?
Oh, largest is Philadelphia Gas Works with five hundred thousand customers.
Philadelphia, the home of the Phillies?
Home of the Phillies.
There's a lot of woods in Pasco and Hernando still.
Right. We've got a lot of space.
Just, just don't change the name, Counsel, from, you know, Clearwater Gas. Consent on 5.2?
Yes.
5.3?
Approve a contract with Magnolia River Services, Inc., in the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars for the period May one, two thousand nineteen, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty, with the option of four one-year renewals in the amount of three thousand dollars per year to provide gas system flow rate and modeling analysis and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Langill again.
This is, Magnolia River was selected by RFP Committee fifteen dash nineteen. What this item is, is that it goes in line with all the gas lines that we are installing up in Pasco County in our growth and expansion. We need to have a software system where we can model our system online to determine areas that are weak areas in our system, where we may have low pressure problems, where we need to determine what's the right size gas line to put in that area. So we did this RFP because it was time for us to do that instead of just running lines that are, you know, typically we would run four-inch lines or six-inch lines to meet our demands, but now with all the growth that we're experiencing up there in Pasco County, it's the right time and we really need to move forward with this. This dollar amount is well under the hundred thousand. However, the contract has indemnification language in it. It does not waive any sovereign immunity, however, it needs to come to your attention for your approval.
Questions for staff on 5.3? Mr. Hamilton?
It's twenty-seven thousand for the first year and then three thousand per year after that, so we're buying the software in year one and then the three thousand each year in the subsequent years as support for the software?
Yeah, the purchase of the software was outside of this. We actually did the direct purchase with the vendor that provided the software. Magnolia River stated what software they wanted to use and train us on. Then we did a direct purchase with that vendor because it was right around thirty-five, forty thousand dollars for that. But this year, we need to enter into a services agreement to have them come on site, do all the training necessary for the first year, which is the twenty-seven thousand. And then each subsequent year, following year would be three thousand for maintenance if we deem appropriate.
If I can clarify, this Section Eight indemnification.
Yes, sir.
What does that?
What's your question?
What does that obligate us to?
Section eight, did you say? An indemnification agreement means that we will hold them harmless against litigation or damages. And let me pull up that specific provision. Whenever that is a requirement of a contract, we bring it to you because typically there's not a specific limitation of that, and so the cost to you could exceed the cost of the contract. So when there's an indemnification agreement, we require the contract to come to you. I got it.
And what does that potentially mean?
It means that you don't, there's potentially cost to you beyond the contract cost. If there are liabilities, losses, damages, judgments, claims, et cetera, as provided in the language, we agree to hold them harmless against that.
Okay.
If I could make a clarification, so if they tell us to install a four when it should have been a six and there's too much pressure and it blows up and somebody gets sued, they're not responsible? Is that?
They do, they would have, it's a mutual indemnification agreement, so we're held, we indemnify against our liability. So they are also agreeing to indemnify us if it is their liability. I'm pretty sure that's the case. Each party shall indemnify.
So you're comfortable with?
You do this all the time.
Okay.
Virtually most contracts that you have, especially the ones that generally, the larger ones that come to you, have indemnity language. And so, yeah, this is not an unusual provision. It's unusual on a smaller contract.
But your point switched.
Yeah, I know that's where you're going.
Consent? 6.1.
Approve the contract between the City of Clearwater and Eastburn Investments, Inc., to relocate the current onsite health clinic from the current location of Suite Two Forty to Suite Four Hundred within the Powell Professional Center at 401 Corbett Street, Clearwater, for a cost not to exceed four hundred thousand two hundred and thirty dollars for the five-year period beginning June one, two thousand nineteen, through May thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Approve relocation expenses of not to exceed fifty-three thousand dollars. Approve relocation expenses of not to exceed fifty-three thousand dollars and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Ms. Shannon Jones is Assistant, newly appointed Assistant Director for Human Resources. This is her first time. Be good.
So, good morning. The item before you this morning is to approve a new lease for our employee health center. The employee health center opened in July of two thousand and ten in its current location and is available to all active employees, their spouses, and children, elected officials, and retirees who are on the medical plan. The center was open to mitigate the increasing cost of medical insurance for the city as well as to offer employees enhanced access to medical care while removing cost barriers such as co-pays and deductibles. The initial concept of the employee health center is to divert office visits, prescriptions, imaging costs from the medical plan by providing these services through the employee health center. The more long-term strategic plan was to reduce and or prevent large claims from identifying high-risk individuals through the use of administration of health risk assessments, followed with the creation of supporting wellness programs and initiatives. Since opening the employee health center in 2010, the number of services through this signative plant, medical plan, received by members and physicians' offices has decreased by 33%, which equates to over 3,400 visits annually. And the utilization of prescriptions has reduced by 34%, which equates to over 11,900 prescriptions per year. Our current employee health center is set to expire in June of 2019 in its current location. When considering the operations to renew at a new location or to move to a larger facility, the HR department, our insurance brokers, the Garing Group, and the employee health center staff reviewed our current performance and utilization of the clinic. Due to its sustained success with the employee health center, in conjunction with the clinic reporting and ROI averaging on 1.8 over the last three years and an employee satisfaction rating of 97%, it was decided to explore other locations with larger square footage to increase the span of services that could be potentially offered through the employee health center. Our clinic is currently located at the Powell Center in Suite 200, and that offers approximately 2,500 square feet of operating space. And that same building is Suite 400, which became available during our search for a possible new clinic location. Suite 400 offers 3,719 square feet and would only increase our rent approximately $22,000 annually. The lease being presented is a five-year lease. The landlord has agreed to pay for the costs associated with the build-out and is responsible for major repairs and maintenance. The lease provides an option for the city to terminate the lease by providing a 120-day written notice at any time after the full first year with penalty. The lease agreement provides a rental rate of $6,282 per month with an escalation of 3% per year. The relocation expenses are estimated at $53,000, which includes all the moving expenses, additional equipment, recalibration of the existing equipment, and IT implementation. Funds are available in the employee health center budget to fund the fiscal year 2019 portion of this contract and the relocation expenses. Funding for future years will be included in the proposed budget request. We see the additional space as an opportunity to increase services offered by the clinic, which has the potential to increase savings to our medical plan. The additional space will be, will provide expanded room for healthcare coaching, provider office space, a procedure room, and medication storage. The most important addition is the ability to have a procedure room. With the addition of a procedure room, the clinic will be able to perform enhanced chiro surgery and asthma treatment. Just shifting 10% of these two types of claims from the medical plan would generate an estimated $45,000 a year in savings. Space would allow future possible expansion for x-rays and/or performing pre-employment physicals. The new location also allows for the space to bring in specialists for escalated conditions such as diabetes, heart disease, and physical therapy in the future. In closing, we ask the city council to approve the relocation of the employee health center to Suite 400 of the Powell Center and agree to the five-year lease of this property. The larger suite will provide significant opportunity to increase services at the clinic while offsetting the expenses to the health plan and reducing overall healthcare costs while providing a convenient and valuable benefit to our employees, retirees, and their dependents.
Questions on Agenda Item 6.1? Mr. Hamilton?
Yes. I know the, the employee health clinic has been a big success and huge, you know, afforded us some significant savings. At one point, we were partnered with the City of Dunedin and they pulled out on their own, for whatever reasons they had. But my question is, would it be beneficial to us to, have we approached any of the other local, say Safety Harbor or Largo, to see if this would be something that they'd be interested in participating in as well?
Mayor, I'll be happy to answer this because these two ladies wouldn't know the answer.
So I wasn't sure where I should be looking.
Great question. And we do often have the ability to have these conversations and we've, from time to time, revisited those. At this point in time, it's funny that neither of the cities that you mentioned have the ones that have showed the most interest. But more recently, I think we got as close with Oldsmar. So, yeah, it's, it's an ongoing opportunity and a question, but we don't have anything concrete at this point in time.
I mean, geographically, it's not all that convenient for Oldsmar.
Well, I think that was part of a conversation about whether we would add a second location potentially. And again, there's nothing concrete that has, has, you know, proven itself out of that. No problem.
And, and the manager and I meet with the mayors and city managers from North County quarterly, or at least every other month and not quarterly. And this is something that we remind them of, especially at Dunedin, when they had their own. Mr. Alberton?
I thought you had said that there was a 34% decrease in the beginning of what you were talking about, and then, then you're talking about renting a larger space.
So the 34% decrease for both the office visits and the prescriptions, that decreases through our medical plan. So that means that we're shifting the cost through our medical insurance and that means
Okay, all right.
We're shifting it to the employee health center.
That makes sense now. Thank you.
Mr. Kandav?
400,000 is largely the rent for the next four years?
Yes.
Of the last four years, was it? Five years? What was the rent the last five years?
Our current rent per month is right around $4,500. So it'd go up to a 62, 6246 per month.
Okay. Yeah, I know this figure's sad. So that's not really the relocation cost, that's the rental?
Relocation would be the 53, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Question?
Mr. Pogly.
Maybe you could verify if I make this statement. So it seems to me the benefit is going to be those municipalities that have larger number of employees because they're incurring the most cost for their health plan. And so if you're going to defer and reduce costs, I think we'd reach out to the cities that, I mean, we're six, the larger cities. Does anybody else have something? Does St. Pete have something similar to this?
I know that they were exploring having a clinic. I don't know if they've done that or not yet.
Because that would help offset our cost of partner.
You're, you're correct. And that's one of the reasons that we haven't actually had others that have really, when it was all said and done, you know, had, saw the benefit. Because you, you have to have a traditional insurer running behind your clinic for specialties and for all those things that your clinic's not going to be able to provide in terms of major medical and those other things. So it, it has to make sense for them financially.
There was no space on the second floors that we wouldn't have to go from the second floor to the fourth floor to add the extra thousand?
I don't believe there wasn't a space that large available on the second floor.
And I, I think the plus, though, is that, too bad we're hearing this now, all of the regl, all of the cost of the build-out is being absorbed by the property owner?
Yes, yes. So there was an estimate for the build-out costs, the total build-out costs are $50,450. The landlord has agreed to absorb that.
So, I mean, that's the point. I mean, you know.
They want to city as the partner.
Pardon?
They do.
Yeah. Thank you. So that, appreciate that because I wasn't all excited about it until I saw that the build-out costs were being absorbed by the property owner. Very good. Consent?
Yes.
7.1.
Approve a sublease agreement between the City of Clearwater and the Clearwater Regional Chamber of Commerce and the State of Florida Bureau of Public Land Administration, Division of State Lands, for use of the Florida Department of Transportation building and property located at 3204 Gulf to Bay Boulevard to allow for the Clearwater Regional Chamber of Commerce to utilize said property as a visitor center and for trailhead facilities and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Laver.
Good morning. Michael Lavery, Parks and Recreation. Over a year ago, the city leased the state-owned building on Gulf to Bay Boulevard at the base of the Courtney Campbell Causeway, leased it from the state. There's currently a tenant on the second floor, that's the National Senior Games. This is a second sublease that would lease the first floor to the Clearwater Chamber of Commerce.
What?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, no, are you finished?
I just forgot to say that there would be a restroom available to the public and also a visitor center and public parking there as well for users of the trail.
But you didn't say how much?
How much? Sorry, there's no cost. This is a, there's no cost to the lease, no.
And who's going to be responsible for the upkeep of the building, the maintenance?
The city is responsible for the upkeep of the building except for the specific items in the sublease. I mean, any, any sort of build-out or anything is, is the responsibility of the Chamber of Commerce as the tenant there. So we don't expect any additional costs.
Any other questions, council? Mr. Alberton?
Yeah, I got to tend, when they were putting it together, and I think it's a great, a great spot for the chamber as well as a trailhead with the bathrooms for what's coming with DOT and the trail connection to the Causeway.
Consent? Mr. Kandav?
Do you agree with me? This is a fantastic idea.
I certainly do.
Well, question.
Well put.
Put a question.
Mr. Hamilton?
How many, how, how much parking area is there? And is this, you know, as the trailhead, you know, becomes a reality type thing where, where there's actually the overpass and makes it even more accessible, is there the opportunity to increase the parking capacity?
Most of the, I don't think there would be much space to increase the capacity. I would guess, I don't know if I have the number offhand, but I would guess the number of parking spaces to be about 100?
Yeah, yeah, there's about 100 spaces on.
Mr. Dunbar?
I'm sorry, Kevin Dunbar, Director of Parks and Recreation. There's about 100 spaces located on the site. This will, as council may recall, this will be one of two trailheads. We're also going to be doing one on McMullen Booth Road next to Del Oro Park, a property that we've, we've acquired also to help to, to facilitate that also. One of the big pieces here is that the, the chamber is going to maintain and operate that restroom. They will clean it, do all those kind of things. It'll be made available to the public. So that's kind of their piece that they're bringing to the table, is that responsibility to do that. And that's seven days a week.
And that was the point I was getting at. So I appreciate your clarifying that, you know, because I wasn't sure whether we were responsible for the general upkeep and that's, that's.
We, we just have the, you know, air conditioning, the roof, you know, those kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah, which is understood. I, I need a question. Now, did the chamber not, didn't the chamber used to have a welcome center there on the Causeway?
Well, it was, yes, it was in the area right near where the monument is now.
Yeah, yeah. And that was something that I, I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but we get a lot of inquiries about why don't we have a welcome center on the east side of the Causeway? So thank you to the chamber for agreeing to reopen that, if I'm correct.
Yeah, yeah, actually, the chamber approached us when they saw that we were looking to, because remember, we, we went back originally on the building, we wanted to control that north side of the Causeway because of the bridge coming in and those kind of things. And so when a design was created that was going to be able to retain the building, the chamber talked about the fact that they wished they'd still had the visitor center there. And so that's when, and discussion's been going on for, I don't know, boss, what, about two years about, about making this happen, and we finally have come to, to fruition. So.
And now that the two chambers are going to marry, this will benefit the beach, you know, and its, its members as well. Consent?
Yes.
7.2.
Approve cosponsorship and waiver of requested city fees and service charges for special events, including seven annual city events produced by Parks and Recreation Department and 24 city cosponsored events produced by others at an estimated general fund cost of $629,140, $107,750 cash contributions, $521,390 in in-kind contributions, and enterprise fund cost of $44,930 for the purposes of fiscal year 2019, 2020, departmental budget summits. Mr. Dunbar?
Good morning again, Kevin Dunbar, Director of Parks and Recreation. And I have Lilia Peterson here with me, who is the Chair of the Special Event Process. I think everybody on council knows her. This is her first experience at a council meeting. This is the annual item that we bring forward each year at this time of year, beginning of the budget process, the various different cosponsored events that'll take place throughout the city that, that the city has provided support to, or would be requested by support to. 30 different cosponsored items. From a general fund perspective, the general fund contribution would be up if, if this was approved, about $52,000. The biggest chunk of that is the, for a while now, Clearwater Gas System has offset about $40,000 worth of cost for fireworks. These are now included as part of, a part of the general fund. Of course, there'll be a corresponding decrease in terms of the enterprise funds. We have three new events that are, that are listed as part of this. Make a Difference Day, NFC A Leadoff Classic, as well as we've put the Hispanic Heritage Festival back in here again to provide some, some offset. Little different formatting that we've done this year. There's a third sheet, you know, because you have what is currently this year, you have what's proposed next year. And we've listed in the past, and it's just, it has gotten so volumous, the different activities that are, that are department-sponsored, so not necessarily activities that council's being asked for to say support to put in for the budget, but just to give you all the other different things that are going on. So that's that third sheet where we've broken that out and probably in a little different format. We think it's a little more readable and a little more legible. So with that, Lily and I are prepared to answer any questions the council might have.
Questions on 7.2? Mr. Pogly?
Thank you, Mayor. So, and it is very good breakdown. There's a lot of information here. But a couple, and you did make a comment on, like, all the different events that are maybe not fully city cosponsored but departmental. So are not all of those listed? And the reason I ask, because I think this year, the downtown Clearwater Craft Beer and Music Festival is still being supported by the DDB and Parks and Rec. But I didn't see that on any of the three pages. And then did they, I know they were trying to work on becoming a signature event and they had some transition problems. But what is the status of them? And maybe Lily could answer. Did they get an application in for the 1920?
They don't have a cosponsorship application for 1920. As far as the department-sponsored one, this is just a list of 2018 department-sponsored ones. The Craft Beer Fest is a part of the cosponsorship for 18, for the current fiscal year of 1819. So it could become a department-sponsored one for 1920.
Thank you.
Yeah, I probably should have clarified when I said, the, the list is the previous fiscal year to show everything we have supported.
Got it.
Not necessarily projecting what we may be supporting in the future.
Got it. And DuPont, did I hear that fell off the, fell off the list of that?
It doesn't have a date currently. The date that they had has been suspended, and I don't have a new date at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council?
Well, not really a question as much as a comment, since this is going to go on consent.
No, maybe not.
Oh, maybe not. Well, but to me, I mean, this is a, you know, the comprehensive list of all these different activities and events, you know, these show, you know, what a diverse community we have and how we participate in so many different things. And we help provide all this opportunity for, for so many different aspects of our community in, you know, which is contrary to what some of our naysayers, we get things at City Hall almost daily saying that, you know, we're wasting money and spending money. But, you know, these are, these are the things that make our community what it is, and I think it's all money that is well-spent. And if you look at all these, all this information which is available, it will show you exactly what we're doing. And, and I applaud the entire city staff and everything for, for what we're doing. Now, maybe I made my comment too soon because maybe it's not going up consent.
Mr. Alberton?
Well, and I, I agree with Mr. Hamilton, but I'd like to pull this off. Well, and I, I agree with Mr. Hamilton, but I'd like to pull this off, consent, just because I think an explanation with you telling the public this would be a great thing on Thursday night, so.
I guess I can make my comment twice.
But these questions are going to get people upset, and I apologize, but there are a couple of things here that bother me. But before I get to that point, clarify the Hispanic Heritage one. Is that going to be a one-day or a two-day event now?
One day.
So we've worked out the issues that we've had with the, okay. And what is the NFCA Leadoff Classic? Would you explain that again?
NFCA stands for National Fast Pitch Coaches Association. So NFCA is really the leading umbrella in this country for, for fast pitch softball. They actually are the group that does the national rankings. So they are, we are going to be hosting the weekend before the ESPN Elite Classic. About 20 Division One teams that they will be bringing in as part of an event that will book in the ESPN event, and we are hopeful within two years to be having that on, at least ESPN's digital format.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question about that.
Okay.
I see that's 9,000 on the budget, Parks and Rec budget, and the same as last year, same as this year. And none of this talks about any revenue that comes in, it's just the cost.
Yeah, this is just in-con support.
All right, thanks. That's all. Thanks.
Counsel, this is where people are going to get upset with me, but, and particularly the NAACP, because I'm frustrated that we have a parade that there's nobody on the street looking at. And we take resources to block streets, and the only people that you see are maybe one or two people on that route down Cleveland Street. For a rally that's attended by the same people who were in the parade themselves, it really doesn't draw anyone. I mean, we could go, we could do the parade around Campbell Park and have a bigger attendance than we have at Coachman Park, and I, I don't, I just don't know what to do, because I know staff has talked to them, we've talked to them, you know, in the past, and I don't know whether we need to have a conversation up here about it or just try it one more year and see what happens. Mr. Horn?
I think there are two aspects of this. The NAACP has gone through new leadership. They're well aware of that sensitivity. So the question is, how would they approach addressing it? The other aspect of this is that this rally, in my view, is a community rally. So you've got people all over our community who could just as easily come to this as go somewhere else. So regardless of how much we put into it, you've got a community that has a role to play as well. So it depends on, you know, where you want to draw that line. But I know Mr. Atkinson, who is the NAACP president, is well aware of what you just articulated. I just don't know what, what they're planning to do. We know that the breakfast is very popular, well-attended, works well. The march and the rally are, are just, they just haven't had the kind of appeal.
And I don't know whether, you know, they ought to just try to refocus it in the community itself, because it's not drawing, you know, any kind of support outside of the community.
Outside of the breakfast.
Yeah, outside of the breakfast. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying to cut the support, but I'm just wondering what the value of a parade is that nobody, you know, nobody sees.
They've got rid of the Christmas parade.
Yeah.
Well, the one comment, though, is, you know, it's not a parade, though. It's a march. I mean, that's, and maybe that's semantics, but that's, that's, I think, how it's viewed. It's, it's a march. They've always desired, because Coachman Park is the premier place, to wind up down in Coachman Park to do the rally. But as the manager said, over time, you know, we've had conversations with them about different places, different, you know, different things. When you look at the breakfast, at one point, the breakfast was pretty weak. They've put a big emphasis into the breakfast, and I think that whole event has improved quite a bit. And I think to some degree, because it has a pretty good duration of time, people are kind of, sort of semi, maybe semi-done with their-
And they've had excellent speakers at the breakfast.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. But we will, we will definitely convey these thoughts with them.
And like I said, I'm not suggesting cutting the support. I'm just suggesting, you know, is it worth, you know, because for a parade or a march, people seem to tend to go down to St. Petersburg for that, which is probably the largest Martin Luther King, you know, parade march in, at least the southeast, if not the country. Then my other one is, is the one that we've discussed over and over again, and that's the Tampa Bay Veterans Alliance program. But at least we've reduced our, you know, they've asked for less money this year.
No, basically, it's the same amount of funds, a little more maybe in-kind, but what, one of the things we've done is we've tried to break things out more, because they actually are doing two activities. You know, they're doing, you know, we've traditionally supported the Veterans Day event. We've migrated to providing some support towards the Memorial Day event. You know, you may recall, the Memorial Day event was originally done as, that's when we opened the facility, and we opened it on Memorial Day. They kind of liked the buzz and the pop, so they wanted to continue on. And so we allowed some of the resourcing that we provided to shift, if you will, over to there. But, you know, basically, our resourcing stays about the same, but it's over the two events. And so just for more clarity's sake, we've looked to clean some things up. And so we've just identified, okay, well, there's a certain amount of money goes to Veterans Day, a certain amount of money goes to Memorial Day.
All right. So we will discuss this further then on Thursday evening. Agenda item 8.1.
Approve an agreement with Exxon Incorporated of Scottsdale, Arizona in the amount of $114,000 for interview room recording equipment and licensing in accordance with City Code of Ordinances, Section 2.5641D, other government entities bids, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Major Dalton?
Major Dalton, Police Department. As you're aware, on February 7th, the council approved agreement between the Police Department and Exxon for Digital Evidence Management System. Currently, we have five interview rooms within our Criminal Investigations Division, one DUI room, which are equipped with audio and visual equipment. So we seek approval to enter an agreement with Exxon Incorporated to update the existing video equipment and audio recording equipment and ensure compatibility with that Digital Evidence Management System. The department has anticipated this purchase and has funding available for the first year of the agreement in the amount of $66,915 plus a 5% contingency through P-1802 Police Equipment Replacement. The four subsequent years' service and support is estimated at an annual amount of $10,801, which we seek to incorporate into our operating budget. Without a chance of any questions.
Any questions on 8.1? Consent?
Yes.
8, 9.1.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential office general, and initial zoning atlas designation of office district for 2233 Nursery Road and an unaddressed parcel abutting to the south, and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Brotherton?
Thank you, Cobb. Brotherton, Planning and Development. So this voluntary annexation petition involves 1.081 acres of property consisting of two parcels of land. One parcel, 2233 Nursery Road, is currently used as an office, and the unaddressed parcel is currently vacant. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city, and the closest sanitary sewer line is located to the west along the adjacent Walgreens property line. The applicant is aware of the required sanitary sewer impact and assessment fees, which must be paid in full prior to connection and of any additional cost to extend to the city sewer line.
Questions on 9.1? 9.2.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of US-19 Neighborhood Center, and initial zoning atlas designation of US-19 District for an unaddressed parcel located on the southwest corner of Nursery Road and US Highway 19 North, together with all abutting Nursery Road right-of-way, and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Brotherton again.
Thank you. So this voluntary annexation petition involves 0.516 acres of property which is currently vacant. The applicant owns 18584 US Highway 19 North, which is the L-shaped parcel to the west and south of the subject property, and is requesting annexation so that the additional parcel is within the city's jurisdiction for future redevelopment of the site. The Development Review Committee is proposing that the 0.117 acres of abutting Nursery Road right-of-way also be annexed. The applicant is aware of the required sanitary sewer and water impact and assessment fees that must be paid in full prior to connection and of any additional cost to extend to those lines, should the property redevelop in the future.
Questions on 9.2? Mr. Hamilton?
Okay, now, this is the, used to be a McDonald's, or, but the parcel we're talking about is only a small portion of that lot, correct?
Correct, yes. It was used as a parking lot for the McDonald's.
So we're not talking about the unincorporated property that surrounds it on two sides. We're talking about basically the McDonald's lot, this piece becoming, I'm still trying to figure out how this one small piece was not annexed into the city.
Yeah, it is a little weird, but this, this would make that entire McDonald's property part of the city.
So when you talk about the L shape that surrounds, you're talking about the McDonald's property, for lack of a better term?
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
9.3.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium-density residential district for 1763 Ragland Court, together with all right-of-way of Ragland Court. Pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading.
Thank you. So this voluntary annexation petition involves 0.218 acres of property consisting of one parcel of land which is currently occupied by a single-family home. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The Development Review Committee is also proposing that the 0.196 acres of Ragland Court right-of-way also be annexed, and the applicant has paid the required sewer impact fee in full and is aware of any additional cost to extend to the city's sewer line.
Any questions on 9.3? 9.4.
Approve the annexation, initial, initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium-density residential district for 1767 Cardinal Drive, and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Guevara?
Hello, my name is Diego Guevara. I'm the new planner. I'm here to explain the voluntary annexation petition that involves one parcel of land with .97 acres occupied by a single-family home. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive solid waste and sanitary sewer service from the city. The applicant has paid the required fee and is already connected to the city sewer system. The property will also receive solid waste service upon annexation.
Any questions on 9.4? Okay, and will also be on our agenda for Thursday night. 9.5.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium-density residential district for 800 Moss Avenue and 3046 Grandview Avenue, and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Guevara again.
These voluntary annexation petitions involve two parcels of land with .437 acres occupied by single-family homes each, located within the Cape Cod Terrace neighborhood. The applicants are requesting the annexation in order to receive solid waste and sanitary sewer service as part of the Cape Cod Terrace Sewer Expansion Project.
Any questions on 9.5? 9, thank you.
Thank you.
10.1.
Approve a contract blanket purchase order to Goodyear Commercial Tire and Service and Monroe Muffler Brake for an amount not to exceed $670,000 annually for the purchase of Goodyear tire products and services for city motorized equipment through March 31st, 2024, in accordance with Section 2.5641D Code of Ordinances, other governmental bid, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Gloucester?
Good afternoon, me and counsel. Earl Gloucester, Director of Solid Waste and Services. The contract covers the purchase of various sized tires for use on all city vehicles and offers discount pricing for up to 55% for their services on all commercial vehicles. This includes roadside service assistance, tire repairs, mounting and dismounting, tire rotation, balancing, and disposal. Goodyear also does fleet inspections of tires on a set schedule at no additional charge. The contract is a piggyback off the state of Florida alternate contract source and is effective through March 31st, 2024. Fleet will be presenting an additional contract through the Florida, through the Florida Sheriff Contract for alternative pricing at a later meeting. Fleet requests an amount not to exceed $670,000 annually for the contract term. If the contract is a no for any reason, Fleet Services will seek alternative sourcing options. Local vendors currently used under this contract are Monroe Muffler, Doing Business As Tire Choice, and Goodyear Commercial Tire and Service Center, formerly known as Winkford. Questions?
Any questions on 10.1? Consent? 11.1. Ms. Ekin.
Mr. Fueno will present this item. This is a request, authority to settle case of Clearwater versus Carolyn Curry, case number 18-6008. Mr. Fueno?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Michael Fueno, Assistant City Attorney. This is a request, authority to settle a municipal lien foreclosure lawsuit that was filed against an individual residential property owner. The property has been brought into compliance. The individual has said that she's willing to pay the city's administrative investigative costs as well as the outside council's attorneys' fees and costs. It's also represented, that's all she has the ability to pay. So we would ask for a request to accept those settlement terms and to dismiss the case.
Questions for staff on 11.1? Consent?
Yep.
11.2.
Request for authority to settle panelist county case numbers 18-8364 CL and 188366 CL. Mr. Fueno?
Thank you, Ms. Ekin. Good morning again. Michael Fueno, Assistant City Attorney. These are two consolidated cases that have to do with two commercial lots that abut each other on US-19. They're ultimately owned by a commercial parent company. The aggregate value of the liens on both properties is $750,000. The defendant is willing to pay a third of that in 15 days, bring the properties into compliance by a certain date. If that date passes, the defendant will be on the hook for the remaining amount. In the interim, they will provide 24/7 security and do some sort of interim measures to kind of bring the properties up to compliance. We are requesting authority to settle those two cases on those two terms.
Questions for staff on the agenda, item 11.2. Mr. Pogly?
Wasn't, and the one-on-one was very detailed, but I'm trying to recall one detail. Wasn't this also to bring it up to compliance to get it ready for development because there's interest on these two sites?
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
Was there, was this, the applicant, or the owner of the properties now is coming forward finally to make this right, because there's interest in developing those properties?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I apologize. Yes, there's actually a redevelopment plan that goes on both of the parcels. That's working its way through a development order and hopefully in an apartment unit complex right there on US-19, so.
All right. Any other, Ms. Ekin?
We understand there is a contract for purchase.
Yes, there's actually a contract for purchase.
Ms. Kundav?
Thank you. Are these two pieces adjacent to each other?
Yes, they touch each other.
Then clarify, I'm sorry, any questions here? Clarify, the lien total is 750,000.
Yes, sir.
They're going to pay 250,000.
Yes, sir.
If they do not demolish the property within a certain timeframe, they will owe us 500,000, then?
Yes, sir. Demolishing the buildings that are on the properties is what will achieve compliance. If they don't do that within the terms of the settlement offer, they're going to have to pay the rest of the money.
Which would be the 500?
So the idea is, yes.
Would be the 500,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in the interim, they're going to have security guards there?
Yes, sir.
24 hours a day, so, okay. Consent?
Yes.
11.3 is a second reading, counsel. Any questions on 11.3? Ms. Ekin, did you have anything further for us under verbal reports?
No, sir.
Okay. 12.1.
Mayor and council, Mr. Maxwell is going to give you an update on imagine Clearwater.
Mayor and council, Mr. Maxwell is going to give you an update on Magic of Clearwater.
Screens down here, let me pull this up real quick for us. So, at our last council meeting, a couple weeks ago, we discussed the cover for the bench, but we also briefly talked about this alternative plan, this, you know, well, both this, our alternative plan, and also some other areas that the council would like to see maybe reviewed. So, what we've done in the past couple weeks is tried to put together what the effect of these changes, as well as the ones that were brought up at the meeting, maybe. So, I'll run through them real quick. I provided each of you in the packet a more detailed review of the areas, but the first one relates to the covered space here, and I'm going to see if the, right in here, this covered pavilion area, if you can see my mouse. This area, in the view that you're looking at now, this alternative view, is actually smaller by about 5,000 square feet. Now, that's, the area below, the upper area still remains, that's the storage, restrooms, some space for, for the police to have a closed area for special events. However, the upper part is no longer covered for about 5,000 square feet, and I'll pull up the old, the old version as well, just so you can see that in comparison. Okay, so, this is the original plan that StanTech did for us, and then this is the smaller version, so you can see that that Civic Gateway Pavilion pulls back a little bit. And there are some concerns about that pulled-back pavilion. Mainly, they surround the usability of that pavilion for what was talked about in the Magic of Clearwater plan. So, it's supposed to be an attractor for, for the park in general, bringing people in to downtown, into the park from downtown. It would appear that there are some significant impacts to the types of events that could be in that park area, should we, the pavilion area, should we pull back that covered area. So, we, you know, I think we need to probably do a little more work on, on what types of events we will no longer be able to use, or what ones we can continue to use. The market is an example that I provided in the, in the document for you. While in the cooler months, it's intended that we'll have the, you know, the market out in the lower area, kind of right in this, let me go back to the one we're actually looking at here. In this area, or even down further into here, in the warm months and the rainy times, it was conceived that, that that covered area, that pavilion area, would be where the market would go. If you look at a place like St. Petersburg, they have to shut down during part of the year, and then in many places throughout Peneles County and Hillsborough County areas, they have to shut down for part of the year. So, does the removal of around 5,000 square feet of covered area provide some of those types of negative impacts to our ability to pull people into the park? That's something that we continue to look at, and, you know, will provide some more additional information to you on. That was the main concern with shrinking that area. Also, things like weddings, those sorts of things could be impacted as well. As far as the next item, and this one actually shows the pedestrian bridge here, a little different version, removing the cover back doesn't necessarily affect it, but there was a comment that we'd like to take a look at the pedestrian bridge issues. So, as it relates to the pedestrian bridge, some of the, some of the concerns that, well, basically what occurs is it removes that bridge, and then you can see down here, there's a walkway. This was added in as well. This is to get from the park to the South Bluff Walk area. So, removing the bridge, at least in this version, breaks up the ability of people to walk from the north all the way down to the south on the bluff, or vice versa. That cannot occur anymore. And this is the alternative version that the engineers have been able to come up with so far to be able to figure that out. We've got some concerns about what that does to the park because of the Bluff Walk's status as sort of a bond between the waterfront portion of the park and the downtown. It's supposed to be the connector for those, those things, and segregating the north and the south of the, of the park is an area that we're concerned. Additionally, you wouldn't be able to access directly from Civic Gateway right over to the South Bluff Walk, you'd have to come in on the, on the west side from the lake area. So, that's another area where we've got some concern about just removing that link. It's not so much the bridge as it is the link between north and south Bluff Walk, and making sure that that bond maintains. The third area that we looked at, and this is where this mock-up really came to light, relates to the, again, I'll switch over to the other version. You can see that the, the original StanTech plan called for, for it to come straight through the park, and it would be just an active, an active street, a through street, and would include parking down through this area in the lake, and also along these, along Cleveland Street, along these, this corridor here. The alternative plan eliminates the, the through-street portion of this, and then shifts that parking that you saw over to this edge. And while we think that there's some, some benefits from a pedestrian perspective, there is some, some concern that, that those individuals that don't live in downtown or work in downtown won't necessarily be able to, or be interested in, use of areas like the green because of, and not in special event times, but in, in other times where it's supposed to be an open green space, that they will be limited in their access from a vehicle perspective. They're driving in from out of town, are they going to want to come down to the green, considering they're going to have to park in one of these areas out here, or over in this area here, or, you know, upland from, from even the bluff? So, that's another area of concern that we've got there. Of the three, this one is probably, this, you know, the adjustments to the Cleveland Street and the parking is probably easier to overcome than the other two, is what it looks like. But we wanted to provide this initial information to you, and then come back in a couple weeks, let you digest a little bit, let you think about it, and then, you know, make some decisions in the council meeting after that, after that work session, and provide any questions you'd like today or after as well. But I wanted to give you sort of an upfront version of this, and let you start thinking about it.
Any comments, council? Mr. Robert.
I'd like to get a, how detailed of a drawing do we have of the pavilion, besides just a?
I do have it detailed in here.
An overlay. I mean, I have in my booklet, I've got some conceptual, looks-like side drawings of it, but, yeah.
Trying to blow it up a little bit.
But we have anything more than that? I mean, that kind of tells.
This is, this is what, I believe we have, we do have one other rendering that's a, that's a little, make it a little easier to see. We can certainly provide that to you as well. The cutoff is kind of where this line is here, is sort of where the 5,000 square feet area is to the, is to this side of it, to the larger area. That one that says overlook, now, there's a number associated with that, but it's not, that's not the area of that space, that's the area of the, you know, entire pavilion area. But this line kind of denotes where it would no longer be covered, in this area, no longer covered. And the bridge would actually not be here, it would come out this way and go.
Right.
South.
Is there anticipated on having storage underneath that deck?
There is, and it would, it would maintain, from what, what the engineers have told me, the main issue is the covering itself. So, this area would still come out, just as it does, maybe back a little bit, but not, you know, it won't come out fully. So, you know, most of that space will remain, it may reduce the storage slash restrooms by a little bit, but we'd have to explore that a little further.
So, as I'm trying to wrap my head around this, and you're saying that if we cut it back on the floor area, that we won't be able to do markets and things like that, possibly it'd be a smaller space, could we, could we have the roof not extend all the way over and still do the, you know, the flat portion of it?
I'm sorry, that's what we are proposing, so, in the.
Okay, so you're not talking about cutting the whole thing off, you're talking about?
Right, this area here, which is, which is currently covered.
Yeah.
Will no longer be covered, but the underneath portion is still there.
Okay, so you still have the platform that would come out?
Platform is there, it's just not covered.
Yeah, and then, would there be a possible that you could connect the bridge at that point?
There is, and that's what this shows here, where it came off.
Well, I know, but that shows trees between, it doesn't really show the, unless those are umbrellas, I can't see.
Let me see if I can blow it up a little bit here for you.
Umbrellas. Oh, they are umbrellas, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
They did look like trees. Yeah, those are umbrellas, and that would be an elevated area, yeah.
Okay, so, I think would be helpful to me to kind of visualize how this is going to look, and by the way, the harbor view being down is, what a great view, view of the bay right now. Is the level of that platform, the height of the roof, in comparison to our neighbor to the, to the south? And, so I get an idea.
We can try to, yeah, we can try to get something.
How high that's going to be.
Right, yeah, I'll try to get something there. It should be, this height here is, so here, that's at 30 feet, or, I'm sorry, 17 feet at the platform there.
Sorry, say that again.
The platform itself is at 17 feet on this rendering, I'll have to confirm that it would remain there.
Okay.
Zoom in on that one a little bit.
But the roof looks like it goes probably 20.
Yeah, the roof goes up to 47 feet.
Okay.
The roof goes where?
47, coming down here, there we go. So, it's 47 to that peak.
50.
That's extended all the way out, though.
That's extended all the way out. You'd like to know where it extends to here.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Polk?
Thank you, Mayor. So, one of the concerns addressing that elevated walkway was that, would it be a potential gathering place or a safety issue for people that basically want to be aerial and look over the new amphitheater, what's going on there? Is that a concern? I mean, what is, what is the width? Because I see that it goes from narrow to wider, once it engages the bluff walk.
I don't think I have the width here, but I will say that, you know, from an operational perspective, that's something that we typically handle via the police, and making sure that , that areas that we believe should be clear are clear. If we don't want people standing on that walkway during an event, we will simply shut down that area during an event. So, that is, we can handle that in an operational capacity.
Well, if you shut down an area just because we have an event, we're talking about much greater programming capacity, either with events at the amphitheater or high school community events. I don't understand, I guess, how not having an elevated walkway takes away that link from South Bluff Walk to North Walk, Bluff Walk, just if it's at grade level. I'm missing the link portion.
So, the bluff is coming through here, and you'd be able to come in and then go over this way.
Right, but if, if the walkway wa, and I apologize for interrupting, but if the walkway wasn't there, we would just cross the street, like we ordinarily would with a crosswalk.
You would cross the street, and then you would come down into this area here, and take this winding, winding walkway all the way over to here. The reason for it is because of the ADA issues and being able to have the, you should get them off there.
So, but there wouldn't be, and I'm just saying hypothetically, if, if the elevated walkway wasn't there, and I'd like to know the portion of cost of that elevated walkway, just that part itself, not the platform, just that walkway over street. If, if the elevated walkway wasn't there, the South Bluff Walk, it would obvi, I mean, it's higher because it's on the slope, it would have stairs to access it. So, I still don't understand why you just wouldn't walk across the street, access the stairs to then continue on at the South Bluff Walk.
We would not necessarily have stairs at this point, this is the point you're talking about, right? Where the.
Yeah, but if the elevated walkway wasn't there, you wouldn't dead-end it right there, you'd have to still have to.
There's a pretty big elevation drop from here down to here, though. So, you know, the stairs, to be able to handle ADA issues and get the stairs in there, you know, if you had the stairs begin here and come up to there, it's very steep. That's why it's sort of a winding path over here, it allows for people to walk up easier, not be as steep, and then also deal with some ADA issues.
Okay.
Whether we would be required to have an elevator or something like that, you know, if we were going to do something like.
So, basically, the elevated walkway takes care of ADA issues without any additional expenses.
And, and ease of walking up the, you know, instead of an incline like this, where it may be possible to, to have that, you know, you might have a more gentle incline when you get over to these other areas. So, I could certainly have the engineers draw something up and.
You know what would be helpful, I'm sorry, one last question, would be helpful, is a three-dimensional virtual kind of view? What, I mean, if that's possible.
I will check, I will see what we can get, yeah.
Mr. Kunda.
Thank you. It, it looks to me like the gateway, the plaza, what are we calling it?
Civic Gateway.
Entryway to the park.
Civic Gateway.
Has an elevation that is, what, 20 feet or so above the lower level? And so, if, so if that is at 30 feet, which is kind of street-level, that looks to me like street-level Osceola, what's the height of the, the Bluff Walk? Is that also at about the same height?
I mean, it varies, but it's, the, the bridge comes off of this elevation right here, which is at 17, 17 feet above grade, it comes, comes directly over from there. Now, it, it may incline a little bit or decline a little bit, I'm not sure exactly what the height would be, but it would be pretty close to this 17 from this grade. I'll have to see what the, what this grade is as it relates to the current grade.
If there were no bridge there, people would have to go from the 17-foot level down to zero, and then back up to 17 or 20, whatever.
Well, they would have to actually go down further, because, I mean, the decline is pretty significant. This shows it being flat, however, this is post-construction, so there's fill and those sorts of things in there. So, you know, we would have to take a look and see exactly what that difference is. I don't have a rendering that shows that right now, but I can have one at the next meeting.
It seems to me not having a bridge really would separate the north from the south. I mean, I know there are ways around it, around, you know, Water's Edge property, but.
From my perspective, the, it's the, the important part is the link, it's not necessarily the bridge. Now, I don't know how you achieve that link without the bridge, but that's a challenge that, you know, we can put on our engineers to see what they can find other than that, other than, you know, this pedestrian bridge, but that, that's the concern, is that we break the link between north and south.
Any other questions?
Let me chime in on the bridge deal. If you separate it, whether you believe it or not, you are actually dividing the park into two, because it, there is not a continuing link between the two ends. People may only choose to visit one part when our whole idea is to redevelop the whole, you know, bluff area and have a continuity so that it's attracting to people. And, you know, I think of River Walk in Tampa, where, you know, we frequently say, hey, you know, you ought to be more like the River Walk, and, and that's a continuing, it's a continuing walk. You don't have a stop in the middle of it because somebody wants to have a view or doesn't like the view. And, and I think we could probably address the concert issue, I understand what you're saying of it, you don't want to close it down, but you can certainly have a policeman there or someone there stationed saying, hey, continue to move through, you can't stop and, and listen to the park. So, I think those are issues that can be addressed real easily. Reducing the size of the pavilion by two-thirds is what you're talking about doing, right, Mr. Maxwell? If you go from 8,000 to 3,000, I mean.
The covered, the covered area.
Yeah, the covered part. So, again, you know, I think we need to be careful if we're going to go down that path, you know, on the overall, you know, use of, of. use of, of this aerial. And again, let me remind you, we cannot consider that it's gonna impact somebody's view. That isn't the issue here. And I, I hope that we stop going down that road because that's not beneficial to all of us. The street, the, the other advantage of the bridge is if you keep the parking where you wanted, then it's a safety issue, right? If we don't...
Yeah, if it's, if it's a through-street remains, like in this version here. If it's through-street remains, yes.
So, it would make it more inviting for the people to meander through the, the park and, and the Bluff Walk. Okay. So, you're gonna come back to us now? I mean, you know, and again, counsel, remember, every time we ask them to come back to us, that's another delay in, in moving forward with, you know, a, a contract to get this started.
Well, that was my question. Where, where do we stand as far as, and, and I, I don't know that we're, I think we're in total agreement, I'm not sure, that, you know, we need to be working on putting out the RFP for a master developer to bring back a proposal for all of the land west of Osceola, basically.
Yeah, our redevelopment strategy conversation is scheduled for the next meeting.
Okay. Because, and I'm looking, I'm looking forward to getting that out and seeing what, what kind of responses we get on it. I have a, you know, personal philosophy that I, it'll, we'll find out if it, if it, if it proves to be true or not after the RFP goes out and things come in and we have to go to referendum. But I think there may be a, a opportunity, depending on how the referendum goes, to supply a little more parking for the park in, you know, getting a little creative, but we'll see. But I don't, we don't need to roll anything like that out until we see where we are.
So, on these three items, then, Mr. Maxwell, you're gonna come back to us at the next meeting?
I'll come back in two weeks and, and, you know, add some information or provide whatever else you all need. You know, I'll note those items that you mentioned. The only other item that I included in here was the update for, the imagine clearer update for May through August. We've been sending them out last couple of weeks for the January through April period, but this is for the, for the next period. And, you know, I identified in that previous update that we would bring forward that task list to you for, for this next four months. Also included the larger overall task list in the, in the pack as well, so you have that. But I wanted to provide that for you. A number of the items say TBD. That, that's mainly because I have a meeting with StanTech tomorrow, which a number of those items will then have a date. But everything will have a date when it goes out on, I believe it's the fourth of May is when I have it scheduled to go out. Everything will have a date at that point. These are just the general items. We know that they're gonna, we're gonna have these at some time during these next four months. We're just trying to schedule when they actually will be.
Questions, counsel, on that?
Mr. Maxwell, explain, what do you mean by active? For example, determination of library improvements, active. I thought we had already moved to some changes for the library.
We did. So, at the, at the meeting, I was trying to pull that one up, actually. At the meeting, I think the last meeting, I identified that the, the library stuff was sort of put on hold when we got into the band shell conversation. So, we would like to, I tried to figure out how that, the determination to do the band shell with the covering affects the library. Because from a program, programming perspective, you know, right now, the library has to sort of shut down when we're having an event. We wanna now see if there's different things we need to do here to, to mitigate that impact on the library because it is pretty significant if we're going to have more shows, and not just from a parking perspective, just a noise perspective. So, if we're gonna have increased shows in the life, we wanna make sure that we're, we're prepared for that up at the library as well. So, that's really what that's all about. We have a lot of information.
But I, but I thought there was a plan for, you know, new things to do, not in the library itself, but in activation, you know, to incorporate that into the overall plan, like a restaurant or whatever.
That's part of that report, yeah, correct.
So, was that not completed at, at some point and put on hold, you said?
Yeah, it was, it was, we got right to the end, and then we put it on hold because of the other conversations.
But, but that has nothing to do with the covering of the band shell?
Well, it, it did as far as the, the impact of what we might move around, where we might move it. I mean, the, the, what we have from our consultant is a layout for the, so a reconfiguration of the library. If we need to move some of those around because of increased shows, then, you know, that now's the time to do that. Now's the time to revisit some of those areas and then shift different uses to different areas. Wouldn't necessarily affect everything, it may not affect anything. But we would like the, the architect to take a little look at that and see what the impact is.
Well, maybe, maybe I was misunderstanding. I thought we were trying to talk about some other activities outside the library proper that incorporated the building, not changing the inside of the library.
Oh, no, there are elements as far as the review for the inside of the library that include reorientation, general reorientation of this space, meant to support still Imagine Clearwater in different ways. But, but it does rearrange a number of areas within the footprint of this building. Not just the exterior. There, there, there's certainly conversation about the roof, rooftop area, those sorts of things. But, but the inside got moved around quite a bit as well.
Well, but again, then, when you say that it's active, what does that mean? I mean, active where you're gonna have a report back to us shortly on that?
Oh, yeah, I actually have a meeting with the library this week. We're gonna start some conversations and, and figure out what the impacts are gonna be and, and then get with the architect to try to refine those a little bit. But, but yes, we're, we're actively moving towards an answer on that.
Mr. Podlai?
To summarize for my mind, the conversation you and the mayor just had is not only because I know the reactivation considered several different things, additional programming compatible uses that would be compatible with the library, but now that we have moved pretty far down this road in Imagine Clearwater, amphitheater, site scope, all this other stuff, it seems to me that additional uses compatible that you could do at that, at the library facility that would be compatible with everything else that is now going on at the library to include the external, I know you talked about reorientation, but that external platform that's out there, that deck that's currently not being used, the top floor of the library, how do those other spaces contribute and complement the new Coachman Park?
Correct, yeah. We're, yes, we're looking at that as well. I mean, that was a big part of the original review as well. But do those things shift any? I'm not sure yet.
And a restaurant, we've always activate Osceola, that was the idea.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, counsel, Mr. Maxwell? All right? Anything further for us, Mr. Horn?
No, Mayor, just, well, I'll just make you aware. We did have an individual fall off of a roof. Though a rescue responded to it and he passed away.
What roof?
Of a building.
Oh, 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 no, I, one of our city buildings?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, you may see that, you may hear that on the news.
No, you scared me when you said roof, you know.
Was that, was that here or there?
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes, Mayor. I wanted to talk to a city manager about bringing some items back that I thought we could talk about. As you know, before I was on the business task force back in 2011, I can't even believe it's that far back. But I, I think there was a couple of things that, I think we're gonna start out with one thing, and that's the, I wanted to talk today about our sign code in the Capitol Theater. And I, I wanted to say that the new downtown redevelopment code or development code, I think they really hit the ham, the nail on the head with what we've been talking about for years on the sign code. It gives flexibility to businesses. It's, it's real important for a business to have sign because of, you know, they've always been complaining about one issue or another with the sign code. And it's very flexible now. It can have bigger code on the top, or bigger sign on the top, and, or they can break it up. So, I wanted to see, maybe have a conversation about if, since it's, I think it's really working well with the downtown, if we could possibly move or talk about doing that same concept to other urban areas we have, like the beach. I know that areas like down US-19 would not be a good idea. Well, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about pedestrian areas on, for this. But in the future, US-19 corridor was replanned to have activity centers which will act in essence like a little downtown areas all the way down and up to US-19. And when we get into areas that is very important for pedestrians to know where they are and what they're, you know, and being able to have a business, have a sign that is a sign of describing their business, I think we've done a very good job with the downtown. So, that was one item. And then kind of an offshoot of that, I wanted to talk about, one of the things we left out of the downtown sign code was having our theaters have some kind of a marquee. That wasn't addressed. And, you know, I can remember growing up, all the theaters in Clearwater, and we had three of them right downtown, all had large marquees, had chaser lights. I mean, it was a very vibrant feel. As you went to the theater, you felt like you were, you know, getting into someplace that was really a lot of activity. I get a little disappointed. I think they did a great job with the Capitol Theater of restoring it. And it's very, architecturally very nice. But, you know, I drive by there all the time, and I can't even read. I mean, the signs they got are eight and a half by eleven things on the wall. I can't read that from my car. It'd be nice to see some kind of a marquee where I could see what's planned that night. And so, I wanted to have just a discussion.
Let, let me answer that question. It was discussed by the council, I believe, previously. And we said we did not want to turn, you know, the Capitol Theater into that. And, and council decided then not to have a marquee. That one of the reasons why Cleveland's, you know, Cleveland Street is not the thoroughfare that it used to be when you were a kid growing up. And cars don't come up and down Cleveland Street like they used to to access the Memorial Causeway. Also, things have changed, and now most people, you know, when they decide that they're gonna go to the theater or buy a ticket to an event, don't, don't go buy a marquee. They go buy what's on the computer or on their phone. So, that expense was something that council, you know, decided that we would not have a, a marquee. And, and the people who were developing the, the hall at the time are redeveloping. I think we're comfortable with that.
All right, well, I thank you for that. But it doesn't have to be an attachment like the old marquees. I would be satisfied with a, a two-foot by three-foot picture frame mounted on the front wall with something that's going on, that, just a little bit bigger.
Well, they, they've got...
Yeah, they got it this size. In my little eyes, can't see that.
But I mean, I think they, I, I think they have the, the space where they could do something like that if they wanted to.
Yeah, and just something that was a little more vibrant than what we have. But that was, and, and I talked to Michael Delk about it, our planning person. And, and I understand the, the concept, well, we don't wanna do with the lights and so all kinds of businesses. And I thought, well, maybe we should, maybe that's something that could be done by use, you know, a theater with over so many people so that a restaurant couldn't have it around their windows or something. But I just wanted to have a conversation of what, what we thought about it now and then maybe taking the sign code and expanding it maybe to the, you know, on the beach, to what, what we have down there.
Well, I, I can take it... I can take it to a whole other level because I've said on numerous occasions that I think, you know, one-size-fits-all sign code doesn't work for me in Clearwater. Downtown should have a certain allowance. The beach could have certain allowances. Gulf to Bay, different allowances. And US-19, different than that. Because to me, you know, what are we trying to create now? Now, we're trying to create energy and vibrancy. You know, signage and, and chaser lights and, and lighting of that nature are things that, that give areas vibrancy. I mean, think of, you know, not that I'm trying to create it, but think of Times Square in New York. I mean, how much energy is there in Times Square? I mean, it's, it's, it's phenomenal. It's not, so, you know, it's, you know, we are, it is a, it is a urban environment. We're trying to create a vibrant urban environment in our downtown. We've got to allow certain things. We don't want our downtown to look like something where, when the sun goes down, we roll up sidewalks and everybody goes home. It's, it's a total different animal. The beach, it's got a lot of, it's got a lot of car traffic as well, but it also has a much more pedestrian traffic now than it had ten years ago, fifteen years ago. So, you know, again, more, you know, a little bit more liberal allowances of, of certain types of lighting and, and signage, I think are, can be a positive for the people that are out there experiencing the, the terrain. So, I know I'm probably not in the majority on this, but that's, you know, that's kind of where I come from. I, I'm not sure, and I know we've done the downtown sign code, redid the downtown, but I really believe that, you know, we can have different allowances for different regional areas of our city based on, you know, what we want that area to be. So...
Mr. Podlai?
Thank you, Mayor. So, that's an awful big chunk to bite off white. Though I don't disagree with you. I remember having the same conversation four, five years ago. However, my question I would direct to Pam is, can we do, because I'm a, a full, in full support of being able to do something special for the Capitol Theater because it is one of the citizens' most special buildings that we have. They've invested a lot of money in that building. I'm not suggesting that the citizens invest any more for a marquee, but can, can we legislate where we have a one-off? Theaters are allowed to have a marquee. I mean, we kind of supervised that project and allowed these moving lights to be installed, yet because it's against code, they can't use them. So, and I would suggest that though we are in electronic age, electronic world, that premium experience when you're walking down to downtown, I mean, we're getting ready to spend hopefully fifty, sixty million, that I think it is a, a very nice premium experience, a contributing asset to have the Capitol Theater be a little bit more glitz and glamour only to market itself, allow it to market itself. Can you do one-off for just a theater without re-changing the whole sign code?
It is not, I would not recommend you do a one-off, but you can deal with theaters, not just one theater. So, if there, it would be theaters in the downtown area. So, if there's more than one theater, you would deal with the theaters in that way.
So, you could specify it just to downtown? Because I mean, I would hope at some point we get another theater in Clearwater. And I wouldn't even be opposed to having theaters in Clearwater, allowing to have marquee and chaser lights. The old-fashioned marquee. I mean, that's, you know...
Well, the only other theater in Clearwater is internal to a mall, so I'm not sure that that works for them, but...
Well, it used to be the outline building at Countryside Mall, yeah.
Many, many, many years ago.
You're right.
So, if you wanted to deal with the downtown and allow special treatment, which we have talked about before, and unfortunately, Mr. Delk isn't here right now, so we probably need to have this discussion with council at a later date. But yes, I think you could do that, but, but it would be for theaters, not a theater in the downtown.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kondo.
I was, thank you, I was thinking along the same line, actually, and trying to look toward the future, where we, we wanna have a movie theater downtown sometime, which ought to have some type of a marquee. We may have a jazz club coming in. It would be nice to have, you know, who's performing there publicized. We're gonna have a lot of events in, in Imagine Clearwater Park. Do we not want to advertise those for people who are walking around downtown, coming up tonight, coming up next week? We may want a marquee of some sort for Imagine Clearwater.
Well, now you have gone quite a far... Well, now you have gone quite a farce, don't you? And I think.
Those are theatrical events, I mean, musical, musical events.
But it's not a theater. So I think this is a discussion that needs to be had at far more length.
I mean, and to that point, let me remind you that a few months ago, we had the conversation about electronic signs. And whether you call it a marquee or an electronic sign at a church or a sign at a school, you know, they can make that same argument to you about we want a marquee. And while you're thinking singularly, it is much broader than that. And we're not at, you know, no one goes back further than I, because, well, now, Mr. Kandem may be a little older than I am, but things have changed. And there was reasons why, you know, we've made those decisions that, that we've made in the past, and if we're going to change something, then we need to remember why we're changing it. Are we changing it for the future or are we changing it because we want to go back to the past? And when I hear marquee, I think of changing letters like used to be at the old Capitol Theater. And that's not what we're talking about now. Now we're talking about electronic signs that change and flash and whatever, and you're going to hear other complaints about, oh, well, no, the lights keep me up now because you've got them flashing, you know, or whatever. So, you know, it's not as easy to find that middle ground that, that we've, we've tried to reach. So I guess we will have a further discussion because I'm hearing some interest in having marquees in Clearwater.
When is Michael back?
He'll be back more respect.
So you wanted to schedule this discussion for the future?
Yeah, one-on-ones maybe first to get everybody's input.
Okay, so.
I mean, that's at least where I'm at.
Mr. Delk, did you? Talk to the manager, you know, and you're one-on-ones with the manager, and we'll see what, okay? Anything further, counsel? Mr. Horn, we're done?
No, I'm done.
Okay, our meeting is going to be on Thursday, the 18th, at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much.